Call this meeting of the City of Salem Urban Renewal Agency for September 10th to order. If the Recorder would please call a roll.
Board Member Kazer.
President.
Board Member Anderson.
Likewise.
Board Member Nanki.
Here.
Board Member McCoyd.
Here.
Board Member Asik.
Here.
Board Member Hoy.
Here.
Board Member Cook.
Here.
Board Member Lewis.
Here.
And Chair Bennett.
Here. All righty, would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or deletions or revisions?
No, we don't.
Okay. We have reports from the Downtown Advisory Board, their annual report to us. And...
No one's signed up?
Okay. Any questions? Do you want to say anything?
Regarding the Downtown Advisory Board or relating to other items?
No, the Downtown Advisory Board.
Okay.
That's what's showing up here.
All right, okay. Yes, we do have... Kristen Rutherford, Urban Development Director. We do have an update, it's an annual update from our Downtown Advisory Board that speaks to activity within the last year. And as you can see in this report, we've had a great deal of activity through our grant programs and investment within our downtown in this last year. We have committed 1.3 million in urban renewal grants. These have funded projects like restoration of the Gray Building, which was recently painted, construction of new housing units downtown. And it has leveraged about $4.9 million in private sector investment for every $1 of urban renewal investment.
Excellent. Any questions, Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a question that I'm sure for the first time will show my ignorance here in the City Council. My question is on item 43A where we're talking about we are going to be increasing the maximum indebtedness for the North Gateway URA. How does one do that?
So, increasing the maximum indebtedness is done through a process called a substantial amendment to your urban renewal plan. That's a process that is defined in state statute. And that process involves, first, just the mechanics of looking at the need for the amendment, what projects you would be wanting to complete with additional funding, how much additional funding capacity is needed. Then you prepare the amendment to the urban renewal plan and report on that that documents how other taxing districts and how the city would be affected in terms of foregoing their tax revenue for a period of time. Then you go through a consulting and confer process with your affected taxing districts. So we will be doing outreach to those taxing districts and to the Neighborhood Association and to the Planning Commission. Once that is completed, then we would be coming back to the Urban Renewal Agency and the City Council to complete the amendment.
Counselor, if you don't mind, this will come up actually under our consent agenda.
Oh, sure. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I was off for just a second.
You were moving ahead.
I didn't know where it was, okay.
Yeah, this really is focused on the downtown if there's any questions on it. Okay. You do have one, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I will show my ignorance here, but I spent part of yesterday afternoon trying to determine who are the members of the Downtown Advisory Board are. And I could not determine that from the staff report or from anything I could find on our website. Can you enlighten me on that?
Oh, let's see if I can remember all of them. We have Jill Munger, who is our current chair. We have... I'm going to suddenly draw a blank now on everything, right? We have...
Is there a place I could find it? Is there a place online I could find it?
I'll have to look and I can let everybody know. It should be... I had thought that it was on our website, but I will double check. But we have representatives of downtown businesses, downtown property owners at large positions. So most of the members are related, either living in downtown, working in downtown, or owning property in our downtown.
Could you email that to us?
Yes.
If you have a chance, great, thank you. The consent calendar.
May I move approval of the consent calendar?
Second. Second by Nanki.
And on the consent calendar, we have the minutes of the August 27th URA meeting on resolutions. We have recommendation to adopt Resolution 1811 of the Urban Renewal Agency to change the order of business at the Urban Renewal Agency meetings so that they follow council rules and are in the same order as the council meeting.
That's what Counselor Anderson was working off, was that?
Thank you for covering for me, Mr. Mayor.
I understand you're running ahead of us here.
Yeah. And then under action items is increase maximum indebtedness for the North Gateway Urban Renewal Area. They're approaching the legal maximum when it was established of 75 million with 7.4 million left, and they've got more stuff to do, so that's what we're doing.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I understand and figured there would be a rather lengthy and thorough process to get to there. I guess my real question is, is the maximum indebtedness, is that related somehow to the value you see in the urban renewal area? Is it related to the value of the taxes that we're going to be capturing on that? Or how do you determine that you can raise it?
So, the maximum indebtedness level is tied to the needed expenditure for projects. So you format your estimates of the projects, of the needed investment, and set your maximum indebtedness level, so that's the most that you can spend on projects. So there are... I don't want to get too into the weeds on this, but there are some limits within statute when you create a new urban renewal area and set maximum indebtedness where it is tied to the assessed valuation. But through this process, it's not a factor.
Do we have limitations on maximum indebtedness that you're operating on in terms of how much you're going toward in terms of total valuation?
We don't have that number yet. So we are... This will allow us to move forward with that process of really defining which projects are the most appropriate. We've got projects in the current plan that we cannot complete within our existing maximum indebtedness level. And then there are some additional projects, continuation of grant programs, projects to meet goals and objectives of the city strategic plan, and then projects that are in various public works master plans, so some transportation projects, some infrastructure infill projects. So we have been working with public works to get estimates for all of these. Now we need to sit down and go through a prioritization process to look at which of those projects can really be delivered within a reasonable timeframe so that this isn't a 30-year endeavor. You know, something that we can really, once we have that money, we can move forward and implement. And that will help us guide the priorities and which projects we recommend for inclusion in the plan. And once we have that and those numbers, then that will come back to this body at that time.
Great. Well, it's certainly a lot going on out on Portland Road. It's really... You can just see the changes happening. It's really very good. Okay. We have a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. We have no special order of business or public hearings were adjourned. Called order this meeting of the Salem City Council for Monday, September 10th.
Counselor Kazer.
President.
Counselor Anderson.
Here.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor McCoyd.
Here.
Counselor Asik.
Here.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Cook.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Bennett.
Here. Good. Counselor comments. Counselor Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to alert councilors that I will be working with staff and Mayor Bennett on a motion to allow the domestic keeping of pollinating bees in residential zones in Salem. I mention it tonight because we are taking a couple of issues that I view as meeting our environmental goals into our strategic plan. I also wanted to follow up on the mayor's request of councilors and staff for their thoughts on this proposal. I've had direct experience with the lack of clarity in this code, and I hope to get it cleared up as we review similar issues later this fall. Please let me know if you have any thoughts on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I came into the office this evening, actually as I was reading my council packet and I wasn't able to get with staff to try to correct that, we have no 9/11 proclamation on our agenda tonight. And tomorrow is a somber day. I was actually on council, that was my first year on council, when that occurred in September. And we lost 2,977 people to a terrorist attack in New York City, Washington DC, and Pennsylvania. About 400 of those were first responders, and the majority of those were firefighters. So if the council and chambers would entertain a moment of silence for a moment to recognize that loss of life and how America actually came together on the day following that event.
Great. Thank you very much, Counselor. If you'd join me, unless there's objection, we'll have a moment of silence in recollection of that terrible event. Thank you. Great. Thank you very much.
And we do have that on our permanent calendar now.
Yeah, yeah. Really, sorry about the oversight. I was in Washington DC about a mile and a half from the Pentagon when that occurred, looking out a window where you could see the smoke come up. It was a... It's a day I'll never forget. A week I'll never forget. Counselor McCoyd?
Tomorrow, I've been working as the mayor, I had the good fortune, the mayor appointment of the 100 Day Challenge where the goal of that was to work on eradicating youth homelessness for those between 12 and 18. And tomorrow afternoon, there's a dedication for a youth, 10-bed youth for 12- to 18-year-old shelter here in the area to go to. So, and that's with the help of a number of people and a young man from McKay High School that sort of...
Four-six.
That led the drive with help from Ron Hayes and, you know, United Good Neighbors and that thing. But it's a great deal, something that's very much needed. We've got hundreds of children that sleep on the streets at night through the year by themselves, and this is one step towards helping them, so it's something I'll be attending, and I would urge you to do so. It's a good thing for the community.
Thank you. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was my great pleasure to join you and Counselor Kazer on Friday out at the opening, the ribbon cutting at C-Tech for the law enforcement and business program. And I just wanted to remind our colleagues here what a great program that is and how the city stepped forward and supported that. And it was really a remarkable event, and a lot of folks showed up. I don't know, a couple of hundred people maybe were there. And so I just wanted to be sure and acknowledge that it's probably one of the best things that we've done since I've been on council in my mind.
Thank you. Counselor Nanki?
A week ago Thursday, last Thursday, so like a week and a half ago, I was honored to throw out the first pitch at the Salem Community Day event at the Volcano Stadium.
Was it in the air?
Oh, I went over at lunch just to verify because it's not actually from the pitcher's mound to the plate. They actually make you stand significant distance in front of it so you don't...
Make a fool of yourself.
Sully it up.
That's good to hear.
But I went over at lunch and hugged a couple, and so I did us proud. And it was a great game. The Volcanos stepped up that night and actually roustied them 15 to 5.
Excellent. Who'd they beat?
Eugene.
Ah, even better. Counselor?
Mr. Mayor, to stop the chuckles and guffaws coming from my fellow councilor, I'd like to tell you that I was there, and Counselor Nanki made it all the way to home plate.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, we're going to go back to approval of additions, deletions, and revisions. Oops, sorry. Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I hope I can get through this. I was proud to join family and friends last Saturday for the Walk for Alzheimer's. There was hundreds of people there, it was great to see the turnout. My wife's mother is afflicted with the ailment, and there's nothing worse than to see somebody deteriorate over time. It's hard, it's harder for the families, believe it or not, than it is for those that are afflicted. And I just, I was proud to join.
Thank you. Yeah, I had the opportunity to speak to that group in advance and blow the horn to start the walk. It's an alternative to cutting the ribbon. It's part of the mayor's deals. But I lost my mother to Alzheimer's and feel very sorry. This is the third year I've been involved in that, plus a couple of other events. It's a really great organization, working very hard on hopefully finding the cure for someone who's alive today. All right. Now we'll do, anyone else, additions and deletions and revisions?
I move approval of, I guess it's a revision to the agenda?
Second.
Second by Kazer.
And that revision is we removed item 5A, file 18-408 from special orders of business, and relocated the item to the information reports, item 6F of the agenda, and that's announcing mayoral appointments to our Salem Stakeholder Advisory Committee.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay. I have a couple...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry. I just have a point and order. I believe that I pulled one of the information items, and I'm not sure that I see it in the...
You don't pull those.
Okay, I called it up. I mean, I called it up.
And you'll have an opportunity to speak to it.
Okay.
In the regular order of business.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, you won't have to wait. Okay. We have a couple of... We have a proclamation and a presentation, one to invite up Fire Chief Mike Niblock and Apparatus Operator and Engineer Willie Giddings from the Fire Department. This year's fill-the-boot organizer. Just thinking.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome, Willie. Let me read this thing, and we'll turn you loose.
All right. I'm going to just pass this boot around. So I'm just going to start this off by reading that proclamation.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Whereas muscular dystrophy refers to a group of more than 40 neuromuscular diseases, and whereas the Muscular Dystrophy Association is a voluntary health agency that was created in 1950 by a driven group of parents whose children suffered from a form of muscular dystrophy, and whereas 75% of every dollar raised by the Muscular Dystrophy Association goes directly to research, healthcare, and education, and whereas local 314 firefighters annually hold the Fill the Boot Days in Salem, raising thousands of dollars to benefit children with neuromuscular diseases. Now therefore I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, on behalf of the people of Salem, offer our best wishes to those living with neuromuscular disease, and do hereby proclaim September 17 and 18, 2018, to be Fill the Boot Days in Salem, and encourage all people to participate by dropping money in the boot at one of the following intersections: Market Street Northeast at Lancaster Drive Northeast, or Liberty Street Southeast at Trade Street South dated this 10th day of September 2018. Willie? Great.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Amanda. She's with the Muscular Dystrophy Association. So she's got a few words to speak, and then I might yab a little bit more.
Well, thank you so much. The generous city of Salem raised over $31,000 for us in the two days that we did Fill the Boot in 2017. I know this year will be even better. You guys are amazing, so I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. We represent 113 families in this area, in this county. And those 113 families, of those, we have about 18 camp-eligible kids. So our camp is actually located in Salem, and we have a summer camp for the children with muscular dystrophy every year. The funds that are raised go to help local families to attend that camp, free of cost to the children and the families. We also have equipment closets that are available for any needs that may arise that maybe a family's waiting for insurance company approval for a power chair. So we do have equipment closets where we can give them those needs until they are able to get them filled on their own. We also have support groups that are available, and we have clinics throughout the state. So I wanted to thank you guys from the bottom of my heart. Not only do I love the families that I work with, but my mother-in-law also has muscular dystrophy. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
And thank you to the City Council, Mayor, and all the citizens, oh, thank you, and all the citizens of Salem for supporting this. I've been involved with the MDA, Fill the Boot with the City of Salem for almost 18 years. So it's always nice to see the support that we have, and it's neat to have the camp here in Salem now. Used to be up in Welch's. It's nice to have it local now, and every... The families come from all over the state and southwest Washington to attend that camp. And it is quite a humbling experience to go there and volunteer, and I've done that a few times, or spent the whole week there at camp. And it's pretty amazing seeing where all this money goes to and what good it does and the smiles it puts on the kids. So thank you again for your support, and the fire chief's support, to let us come out and do it, so.
Y'all get a Kelly Day for this house.
Yeah. Thank you again, I appreciate it.
And then we have a presentation by...
Mr. Mayor.
Whoa, sorry, Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, I can't pass up the opportunity. I'm not sure if the boot folks are restricted to Marion County, but I think you might find a somewhat captive audience that would be more than interested in supporting you on Wallace Road. So you might think about that.
And on the bridge, all the way, if you work it right. We have a presentation of go-bags by the Willamette Valley Victory Riders, a local chapter of the Worldwide Victory Motor Club. I wanted to invite up Brandon Smith and his crew. Come on up. And then also Deputy Chief Belshaw, and Lieutenant Jason Van Meter, and Chief Niblock. Get all these safety guys up here. And I'm going to let you, Brandon, explain what's going on.
Sure, wherever you'd like. We didn't bring all of them up here, all the rest are back. Is this one?
Oh.
Sorry.
We'll get the whole bunch. Go ahead.
Okay. Mayor Bennett, City Council, thank you very much for your time tonight and your service to the community. My name's Brandon Smith, and I'm here tonight with a few members of the Willamette Valley Victory Riders, which is a local chapter of the Worldwide Victory Motorcycle Club. We have a lot more members than this, but it's tough to get some people out on Monday night at 6:00. Our club hosts the Kaiser-Iris Festival Motorcycle Poker Run, with proceeds going to help children in the community, specifically those who are pulled out of bad situations by police, fire, and other agencies. This year we partnered with the Four Kids Project, which stands for Four Kids in Difficult Situations. The project, the Four Kids Charity Foundation collects donations to assist and support the mental well-being and comfort for children during stressful transitions at police stations, shelters, children's services offices, and foster care agencies. Oh, and we had kind of a little demonstration, this is just an example of one of the bags. These go-bags are filled with things they need, things to cuddle, things to hold on to, and know that someone cares. Items include a stuffed animal, coloring books, crayons, small toys, toiletries, handheld games, flashlights, et cetera. The poker run proceeds were used to purchase these go-bags and distribute to agencies around the Willamette Valley. They can be kept in patrol vehicles and provided to children in their moment of need. And we say "fire" also because it's a lot of fire agencies like these as well. This year, the net proceeds for our event totaled just under $2,000. We would like to thank our sponsors, which were Cycle Country, Waller's Pizza, Hog Haven Leathers, Arcane Cellars, and Immortal Inc., all of which are Salem businesses, and helped make this donation of the City of Salem possible. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you very much. Group photo, career.
Turn around, Brandon. Turn around.
All right, guys, are you ready?
Yep.
All right, smile, say Victory Motorcycle Club. Good work.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, this is our time for public comment.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent calendar with the following no vote by Counselor
Second.
So on the consent calendar tonight is the August 27th council minutes. Under resolutions, we've got, we've adopted a resolution, we will adopt a resolution number 201875 to amend council rule 6A to change the time communications must be submitted to the city recorder from 5:00 PM to 3:30 PM on the day of the meeting in order for copies to be provided to council at the meeting. We also have a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2019 Supplemental Budget 1 for the Community Renewal Fund, increasing expenditure appropriation authority and revenues by $436,390. Under action items, we've got approval to become a founding member of Cities for Forests. And that is it.
Well, that's very good. Any discussion? Counselor Anderson?
Yeah, just a brief discussion on item 3.2B. I just want to point this out so it doesn't get lost in the consent calendar. This is a very good thing, as I understand it, and I'm looking at Deputy City Manager Duncan. We got another $460,000 to use for valuable projects in our community from HUD. Is that correct?
$436,000.
$436,000 because we got a bigger appropriation than we had hoped for, so we're able to use that money, you know, for all sorts of community development grants and assisting low and moderate income housing. I guess I'm looking, now I'm looking at you, Kristen, because you're taking the mic.
That is correct. And a little bit later this evening, we will have a few public hearings. Shelley Inger will be presenting some of the awards that we'll be making with this additional funding.
Very good. Okay. Counselor Cook?
Yes, just an additional comment. I was really pleased to see the neighborhood revitalization, as Counselor Anderson had pointed out, on the Community Renewal Fund. So I'm looking forward to hearing more about that.
Great. Any other comments? Okay.
Mayor, Mr. Slater is here.
Okay, thank you very much.
Renewal Fund, increasing expenditure appropriation authority and revenues by $436,390. Under action items, we've got approval to become a founding member of Cities for Forests. And that is it.
Well, that's very good. Any discussion? Counselor Anderson?
Yeah, just a brief discussion on item 3.2B. I just want to point this out so it doesn't get lost in the consent calendar. This is a very good thing, as I understand it, I'm looking at Deputy City Manager Duncan. We got another $460,000 to use for valuable projects in our community from HUD, is that correct?
$436,000.
436,390 dollars because we got a bigger appropriation than we had hoped for, so we're able to use that money, you know, for all sorts of community development grants and assisting low and moderate income housing. I guess I'm looking, now I'm looking at you, Kristen, because you're taking the mic.
That is correct. And a little bit later this evening, we will have a few public hearings. Shelley Ahinger will be presenting some of the awards that we'll be making with this additional funding.
Very good. Okay. Counselor Cook?
Yes, just an additional comment. I was really pleased to see the neighborhood revitalization, as Counselor Anderson had pointed out, on the Community Renewal Fund. So I'm looking forward to hearing more about that.
Great. Any other comments? Okay.
Mayor, Mr. Slater is here.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Without objection, we'll return to public comment and have Mr. Slater come to the podium.
Now, I'm embarrassed, so I apologize. So my name is Michael Slater, I'm a resident of Ward 7 here in Salem. Since many of my friends are here tonight to speak on the plastic bag ban, I won't be speaking to that. Instead, I'm here to speak in support of Mayor Bennett's proposal to become a founding member of Cities for Forests, a new effort by urban design firms, natural resource organizations in cities. Cities for Forests' goal is to better integrate the urban forest into city planning in order to improve public health outcomes and increase cities' resiliency to the new pressures brought about by climate change. This is particularly a timely initiative, since the program's scope includes the forest in the urban watershed, such as the San Tiam, which we've learned is the hard way is especially important to the quality of Salem's water supply. Joining Cities for Forests will be one more step in the council's increasing commitment to improving the city's stewardship of our community's natural resources. It follows on the heels of a commitment to fund a street planting program, establishing and promoting a pollinator habitat program, and conducting a greenhouse gas inventory. And it builds on several existing successful city efforts, such as Salem's exemplary stream restoration efforts. Taken together, the city's recent set of actions, investments, and policy statements, along with the prohibition on single-use plastic bag ban, prohibition on single-use plastic bags, which I hope the council adopts, moves Salem from lagging behind best practices in municipal environment stewardship to leading on them. And that is the kind of city I want to live in, so thank you very much.
Very good, thank you. Any questions? Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, we'll move then to public hearings, and we'll begin with...
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public testimony regarding the 2017-2018 Program Year Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Programs. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by other interested persons. Individuals testifying are limited to three minutes. A yellow light will appear at the podium when one minute remains, and a red light will appear when your time is expired. Please conclude your testimony when the red light appears.
Good, thank you. There we go. Here we go.
Good evening, Mayor Bennett and council members. My name is Shelley Ahinger, and I'm the Urban Development Federal Programs Manager. Tonight, we're going to have the opportunity to allow the public to express any comment on the 2017-2018 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or as we call it, the CAPER. It is in regards to the CDBG and home programs that are funded by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. It is one of the opportunities for us to allow the community to hear the successes and the accomplishments from June, I'm sorry, from July 1, 2017 until June 30 of this year. The CAPER is our opportunity to let you know how we've spent resources for persons and families earning 80% or less of the median family income here in the city of Salem. These needs are met by addressing economic development, homelessness, affordable housing, and revitalization of neighborhoods. This report is the third report in the five-year consolidated plan, which was written in 2014 for the 2015 through 2019 years, program years. We worked with over 16 nonprofits in making these activities happen. The city receives the resources from the federal government, and nonprofits apply for the resources. And as I said, we had 16 different nonprofits working to meet these goals in the city. The priority funding goals for this past year, in which funding was received, was in economic development, ending homelessness, and expanding affordable housing. These goals were part of that consolidated annual performance, consolidated plan, which was written in 2015. As you know, things have changed, but we're going to stay with this year, which is economic development, ending homelessness, and expanding affordable housing. They were in this priority area this year, and we will have a conversation about what could possibly happen next year. Over $825,000 was spent, from once again, July 1, 2017 till June 30, 2018, in those three areas. 56% of it, as you can see, went towards homelessness. And that is where we either provide utility assistance payments for individuals who may be receiving a shut-off notice from the utility company, and/or rent payments and security deposit payments. In addition, through one of our partners, we provided vouchers for monthly rental assistance through the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program. In addition to that, we have economic development activities, and our economic development activities were carried out through merit, as well as through interface. They worked with individuals who are either owning businesses or wanting to grow their businesses, but the owner is within that 80% of median income. In addition to that, we leveraged those funds with dollars from Oregon Housing and Community Services and private equity investors for the affordable housing piece. And you see a 14% on there for affordable housing. That's because that's the amount of money we spent during those 12 months. That's not the amount of money we allocated. And sometimes projects take a long time for them to go from the planning phase until the completion phase. And I'll give you an example. The beautiful housing on Portland Road, we made a contribution from the federal funds to that. And even though families are starting to lease up at that particular housing development, until all the families are leased up and the property has been totally certified, we can't count it as an accomplishment in this particular report. But they will be reported next year. Again, 32 businesses were assisted. Some of those businesses included Frozen Custard Food Truck, mediation, a new mediation business that's starting, apartment maintenance, because we recognize with all the new affordable housing we'll have, there'll need to be a need for some maintenance personnel, and Fiesta Pizza. They worked through merit, either to go to their trainings and/or receive assistance, technical assistance with their business programs. And I'm very pleased to say that we have accomplished all of our goals for economic development that was established in 2015. Our second goal is ending homelessness. And we all know that this is something that we're all focused on at this particular time in our community. We work with victims of domestic violence through the Center for Hope and Safety. We provide shelter care assistance, as well as case management, to help those families that are struggling with homelessness. In addition to that, we had accomplishments this year of 2,373 persons. That means we assisted that many individuals. Our target was 2,225, so we exceeded that target amount. And I look at that as a way of us saying, we are there helping those in the community that need it the most. We also exceeded last year's number, which was a little less than 2,215. Our goal three is 359 households assisted. As I was saying earlier, we have not accomplished, in the affordable housing arena, all of the goals that we wanted to for this year. But you can see the number of units that are currently under, either in the progress, in the process, and/or will be completed by the end of this year, which mean in June of next year, they will be considered to be completed, and we will be able to count. Some of it is new construction, as you can see, in addition to cornerstone apartments. We also have St. Monica Apartments and Kaiser. And because they received home funding, Kaiser is part of the consortium with the city of Salem. So therefore, St. Monica Apartments is counted in the number of units that we have, and it's a brand-new apartment community that Catholic Community Services Foundation invested in, along with the city. We also feel the preservation is important, and therefore, you have several apartments through either Catholic Community Services, the Salem Housing Authority, Shelley's House, and other apartments that are in the process of being rehabilitated. We know we can't build our way out of this situation, so we have to maintain those units that are already in our existing housing stock. In addition to that, we look at single-family rehabilitation. We have three families that are in the process of getting their units modernized, most of them so that they can age in place. So that means we're doing some ADA accommodations and/or other rehabilitation in the cities of Salem, and three seniors will be recipients of that. And we do that through Polk Community CDC. And CDC stands for Community Development Corporation. I apologize if I use acronyms as part of our daily process, so I do apologize. As I said, we have 16 community partners, and I think it's important for everyone to recognize that the city doesn't try to do this by themselves, there's no way we could do this by ourselves, and, but, the city provides $400,000 in general fund that go in and leverage the resources that are brought to the table by our nonprofits and through other entities. So I wanted to recognize those partners for the hard work that they do, and making sure that we meet the needs of individuals in our community. The next steps would be that this CAPER report, which was publicly announced and had a public period of review, we did not receive any comments in relationship to this particular document that was submitted on August 7 for the public to start reviewing, and we will have to submit it to HUD by September 30. They will review it, and from there, we will start the cycle again with our annual action plan. Mr. Mayor, that's the end of that particular presentation.
Excellent, thank you very much. Any questions, comments? I have no, yes, thank you, Counselor Lewis.
Okay. Normally, we wait till after public, I don't know if there's going to be any...
No, no.
Okay. One question about the goal two, ending homelessness. I'm reading through here, I don't see any mention of temporary emergency shelters for the homeless population. Is that part of what you do, or is it more of just the, what's here?
Yes, sir, that is an eligible item, and we are working with Arches in regards to the Day Resource Center, as well as the Sobering Center. We also had a conversation today with Ashley Hamilton from Arches in regards to how we can help support getting, helping churches with their utilities. I understand that's one of the issues in relationship to them opening the emergency shelters on an earlier basis. So we are exploring how we can augment some of the things that those community partners are already taking care of.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you very much for the report, Shelley. These are all terrific projects, and you're to be commended for working on them. I do have a question, though, about goal number four, neighborhood revitalization. You indicated no projects were funded for this component. Could you explain, was there no, nobody came forth with projects, or projects were brought forth that you didn't deem were worthy of?
Yes, sir. Last year, there were no projects received by the Community Services and Housing Commission and the staff to review for that particular goal. That doesn't mean that we don't feel that that's an important part, it was just, we did not receive any applications last year.
So this is sort of an announcement to all those people out there who might be interested in neighborhood revitalization, that there's some money here if you submit a project at some point. Thanks.
Any further questions, comments? All right. Close the hearing, and then ask for a motion. Close the public hearing. Counselor McCoy, motion?
I move the staff recommendation.
Second by Anderson, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. And our next one.
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public testimony regarding an amendment to the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Programs Consolidated Plan. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by other interested persons. Individuals testifying are limited to three minutes. A yellow light will appear at the podium when one minute remains, and a red light will appear when your time is expired. Please conclude your testimony when the red light appears.
Mr. Mayor and council members, before you tonight is the proposed amendment to the 2015-2019 Consolidated Plan. The federal program's citizen participation plan requires the city to provide a 30-day comment and public hearing regarding any proposed changes to the five-year plan which you approved in April of 2015. The consolidated plan, annual performance, plan, provides for a five-year strategic plan, laying out how federal funds, being CDBG, our Community Development Block Grant, and home, home investment resources, will be used by the city for a five-year period. It is a community tool that is, that can be revised based upon current needs of any particular community. We're calling this a substantial amendment because a substantial amendment means that we're going to propose changing the intent of the priorities or goals that were adopted and we have been implementing for the last three years. The written notice announcing this to the community was published in the Statesman Journal on August 7, and the public comment period ended on August 8. The announcement was also posted on the city of Salem's webpage, electronically transmitted to interested parties, made available in the Salem Library and Kaiser City Hall. The public had the opportunity to comment on the proposed amendment during the August 22 Community Services and Housing Commission meeting. We did not receive any comments regarding the proposed amendment. Why are we proposing the changes? Our community is experiencing homelessness, increasing rent burdens, and a severe shortage of affordable and available housing. Housing instability is fueled by an unsteady, low-opportunity employment market. Low-wage work is growing, is a growing share of Oregon's economy and here in the city of Salem. When wages are set far below the cost needed to raise a family, the demand for public services grows a little bit more. Last fall, the city adopted Salem Strategic Plan. The community priorities laid out in the plan were, for the most part, synonymous to the goals of the 2015-19 Strategic Plan. However, in order to focus those federal funds to align with the city's strategic plan and the priorities addressed by you as a community, we want to amend and reprioritize the consolidated plan goals to match those of the city's strategic plan. These are the current priority funding goals. Economic development was priority one in the consolidated plan, in homelessness, expand affordable housing, and neighborhood revitalization. Over the past four years, the city has successfully accomplished many of the goals in the area of assisting the development of small businesses. Additionally, the improved economic conditions have resulted in a growing job market. And for those of us who are in the development business, we understand that housing is an economic development driver. We're proposing to realign the same four priorities, however, make and end homelessness the number-one priority, with expand affordable housing, neighborhood revitalization being second and third priorities, and promote economic development as the priority, which we will get to, but we've already accomplished it by the 2015-2019 goal, but our priorities now will look at end homelessness and expand affordable housing. Additional consolidated plan modifications include saying that the amount of CDBG funds allocated to promote economic development is reduced to the amount that we have already allocated and/or used. That way, we can focus more on homelessness and expanding affordable housing. Changing from the HUDAC and SSAB Board to the Community Services and Housing Commission with you in 2015, those two boards were combined into one commission, but when that plan went in, it was the two separate commissions. Salem Interfaith Hospitality Network has changed its name to Family Promise of the Mid-Willamette Valley, and we want to recognize them under their Mid-Wilamette Valley, and we want to recognize them under their current name, as well as I was not the contact information, a person in the plan, and I need to update it so that it can be reflective of who is responsible for making sure the plan is correct as of today. These are administrative changes, but because you, as the authorizing officials, you should be aware of any plans that we ever change in regards to federal funds. Our next steps, if you approve, will be to revise the consolidated plan. We'll submit it to the Department of Housing and Urban Development for their review and approval. When our 2019-2020 funding allocations or when our portal opens for those grants to be submitted to us, we will be using the new priorities, if approved this evening. And just to add a little bit to it, Ivy Rivas, who's a student at Wilamette University, she's an economic development student, she'll be working with me over the next six months as an intern to make sure that we let the community know of the changes, if approved, as well as to encourage individuals to apply for the fundings based upon the guidance we receive from you. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Again, I have no one signed up on this. Any council comments? Yes, Counselor.
I just wanted to say thank you for the fantastic work on this. I really appreciate the alignment since especially houses are one of the primary means that people use to generate wealth. This makes a lot of sense for security, for safety, for livability. And just to second the comments before, endearing, very excited to see neighborhood revitalization to help reinvestment and universal design, as you've mentioned earlier.
Thank you.
Very good. Counselor McCoy.
I was, we had a committee on this, right? We had one meeting.
Right.
And all the committees I'm on, I looped. They're getting a little older, they get all muddled up. But we did have a committee meeting on this to talk about this very proposal. And, you know, I think the, the way I looked at it was, if we would have had our strategic plan in 2014, when we developed these initiatives, this was following the strategic plan. This is what it would have looked like. So it was really a pretty easy decision to come, send forward to the council to approve because this mirrors what we basically outlined in the strategic plan. So I'd.
Counselor Kaiser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I was also on that committee and felt that this was kind of a, this was a no-brainer in a lot of ways because we did our strategic planning. Thank you, Shelley. Just wanted to ask a question. So practically on the ground, what this looks like is essentially that we'll just be devoting more of those federal funds to the reprioritization than we have over the last four plan years. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then for the next five-year cycle, or the five-year plan, I guess that'll happen in 2020? Is that?
Well, actually, I have another intern from Wilamette University who was not able to make it tonight. And Indy will be working on putting together the request for proposal so that we can issue that in January, February, so we can go through another year-long process with the community in relationship to these federal resources. And so we are starting to already think about that, and we will certainly be getting input from council in the community in relationship to their preferences at that time.
Okay. So it could be that the priorities might be changing, or there might be different things on that list coming up. Is that correct?
There are always opportunities, but we look at what the demographics and what's on the ground now, and the way we are, as a community, addressing homelessness, I can forecast.
Probably going to stick around.
That's what I'm thinking.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Counselor McCoy. I'm going to close the hearing. Counselor McCoy.
I move approval of staff recommendation.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Next, public hearing.
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public testimony regarding amendments to the 2018-2019 and 2017-2018 Housing and Community Development Annual Action Plans. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by the other interested persons. Individuals testifying are limited to three minutes. A yellow light will appear at the podium when one minute remains, and a red light will appear when your time has expired. Please conclude your testimony when the red light appears.
The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to provide an opportunity for the public to hear and comment on the proposed amendments to the 2017-2018 and 2018-2019 Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, and Home Investment Partnership Home Annual Action Plans. The annual action plan is an implementation of the goals that are identified in 2015-2019 Consolidated Plan. A public notice announcing these plan modifications was, was placed in the Statesman Journal on August the 7th. It also, public was also provided the opportunity at the August 22nd, 2018 Community Services and Housing Commission meeting to make any comments. And we also sent out press releases, and Kenny did a great job on getting it on social media. We did not receive any public comments regarding these, this, these proposed amendments either. Our goals in regards to using these funds are to preserve and expand affordable housing, prevent and reduce homelessness. The projects that we are presenting are designed to assist, again, low-to-moderate-income citizens, specifically for households with an income at or below 80% for our metropolitan area. For a family of four, very low income is $32,550. Required environmental reviews are conducted for each project to determine whether or not it will have an impact on the community in a negative manner and/or a finding of no significant impact. The home funding recommendations are increased because HUD awarded the city an additional $190,000. When we appeared before you in May, we didn't have the exact dollar amount that HUD would be providing us. After you approved the action plan, we received official notice from HUD, and there was a $190,000 increase in home funding. So the CSHC Commission went through the process of looking at some applications that had been received and were able to fund two additional areas. Wilamette Neighborhood Housing Services is our only community development housing organization, a community housing development organization, or CHODO, and they asked for $30,000 for operational support. They will be building a new construction project over in West Salem called New Ave Luz. This operational support will help them go through the process of making sure that they have their financing in place, as well as ongoing staffing, so that we can make sure the project gets off and is completed in a timely manner. The other project that came before us was Northwest Housing Alternatives, and they requested $500,000. However, we didn't have enough to fund them, so the commission voted to recommend giving them $240,000, which was the balance that we had after all of the other applications. They have two housing developments, one named Oak Hill Manor and one Sunny Slope Manor. Both are existing housing, and they need to do some rehabilitation, including roof repairs, ADA accommodations in some of the units, new sightings, and things of that Under the CDBG program, HUD, we, when we came to the council in May, once again, Women at the Well, Grace House, was awarded a supplemental amount of $24,000. Since then, we've had some additional monies, and so we'd like to award them the additional $7,806 to just increase their amount. We're, we're required by the federal government to spend more than 15% of the resources they give us on public service, and this was the amount remaining before we would go over that cap. So they, the commission wanted to give them the maximum amount that was available. In addition to that, the roof replacement is an emergency that came to the staff in regards to St. Francis House. As you know, it is a shelter for persons who are homeless, and it's a family shelter, one of the few in the city. And the roof replacement, they thought, was down the road a couple of years. We know that the rainy season is around the corner, and we certainly want families to be able to live in accommodations that are, are meeting our standard for housing. And so we're recommending that the $85,000 be awarded to them. In addition to that, the Center for Hope and Safety purchased some time ago the Greyhound Bus Terminal. It needs to be demolished so that they can begin in earnest their plans to build additional affordable housing on that site. And we feel that that's also another good way for us to get affordable housing, and demolition is, is needed, and so we would like to use $90,000 to do that as well. The Salem Housing Authority has several projects in the hopper, and as I said earlier, it does take time for complicated, complex developments to get off the ground. So we'd like to help them acquire the Fisher Road Apartments and use $425,000 of resources that they have been allocated for Yucuena Project, and then we would do a forward commitment to them so that they would be made whole with our 2018, I'm sorry, our, our next allocation, which will be 2019. Our next steps would be to amend the, amend the action plan and submit it to HUD, complete the environmental reviews, get them under contract through a sub-recipient agreement, and then implement and monitor the project. Once again, this has already gone through a comment period provided to the citizens of Salem and Kaiser, and we did not receive any citizen comments regarding the proposed amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cook.
Thank you. Shelley, I just wanted to say thank you very much for the presentation, and I was super excited to see both Oak Hill and Sunny Slope Manor included. That's fantastic. I know it's not the full amount, but it's nice when we can do some good work.
We agree.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to put on the record once again that I am on the advisory committee for the Center for Hope and Safety, so I don't believe it presents a conflict, but I just want to put that on the record. Very excited to see this project on your list. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson.
I'm excited, too, with my fellow counselors, but I want to speak a little bit to the, the theory and philosophy behind that, that was expressed by Shelley. I don't know if it's this one or the, the hearing before, where when we have a strategic plan, it's easier for the staff to look at things and to say, okay, this is where the council's going, and this is what we'll look for. I don't always follow this, but one of my first legal mentors used to say, "Plan your work and work your plan." And that's what we're doing here. So I think that's terrific, and I think it really points to the benefit of the city and the city manager making us look at the overall gestalt surrounding the city and to come up with a, a strategic plan. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis.
Thanks, Shelley. I, I have a general question. It's great to have the additional money to do the good things, but I'm curious how it came about was, did we act in a very conservative way when we were planning because of our unsureness of what would be coming out of the federal government, or is there more money being put in now? I'm just, I'm curious how the financial thing works.
No, sir. We project based upon the previous year. And so when we anticipated our funding, it was based upon a $629,000 previous allocation, and then HUD gave us $829.79 additional. And so we just never know from year to year. So we project out what we feel based upon historic allocations.
Okay. Just want to make sure. So the, the projection was based on history. The difference came when there was more money allocated?
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
On your, your slide, on, I think it was on CBDG, the one with the, the $80,000 for, was the first big slide you had, really. I, I just want to understand something about it. Be back. There we go. The Northwest Housing Alternatives funding, asking 500 and net, and receiving 240 because it was kind of what was left over. Do our changes in priorities affect that, to where more money would be available for this kind of project at the end? Does that change at all? Would that affect it? If we have a different priority set, we'd be able to help more in this project?
Well, we're in the process of looking at how we're going to look in the future of allocating funds. Right now, we started, of course, the process last November. They submitted an application. The amount of funds that we had anticipated was $629,000. The amount of subscriptions we received or people requesting for the resources exceeded that amount significantly. When we found out that we were going to be allocated more by the federal government, then the commission went back to those applications that had been previously submitted and then started to award from there.
Okay.
So that's how they ended up with the $240,000. We also tried to make sure that we're looking at throughout the city of Salem and Kaiser, as well as making sure that we are getting projects that are ready to go and that are financially feasible.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Kristen.
Shelley, just beat me to the punch. That is an important consideration, is the timeliness of the project and whether or not it is ready to go, or if we grant this money, they'll have it, but they won't really get to use it for another year or so. And then we have also seen that it's, it can happen occasionally where, as we go through a grant process, the request will be one amount, and then we make an allocation, and, and the different entities are very busy looking for funds from other sources to fill that gap. And by the time this kind of process comes around, they still may or may not need that full amount anymore because they may have found the funding from another resource.
So the project objective will be realized with that $240,000?
Uh, no, sir.
Which is the rehabilitation of existing affordable housing?
Their entire project is $12 million.
Oh.
We are just a gap.
We're just there to help.
We're just a small part of doing whatever we can to assist, but it also gives encouragement.
Are they going to, are they going to raise $12 million?
Between their, their refinancing, their existing tax credits that are on there, so they'll generate some equity that way. In addition to that, they were going after additional OHCS funding.
Okay.
And then this was kind of like the soft gap funding.
How many units are in this project?
They actually have three properties. One is in Polk County, this one in Sunny Slope, and I believe the total project, because we can only fund the ones in Salem, the total project is over 130 units.
Wow.
Total, all three of them.
Will you be monitoring how that's moving along? I'd be real interested in the outcome of its, their, how their success is going, and maybe just being kept up to speed on. That's a lot of housing.
Yes, sir.
A lot of affordable housing for our inventory here.
And their existing units already.
Right.
So they're going to be rehabilitating their existing properties they own.
Right. Making them much more livable, I assume.
Yes, sir.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. Just to highlight, especially with Sunny Slope Manor having a four-bedroom unit available, sometimes when we're talking about units, it's really easy to overlook, as Counselor McCoy pointed out, there's a large number of families, children, under stress. So when you're looking for bedrooms, having the four-bedroom, I'm really proud that that's in our ward and excited to have that rehabilitation occur because there are families that
Great.
need more than one bedroom.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Counselor McCoy.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move the staff recommendation.
Second. Second by Hoy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Okay. We're just chatting here.
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public testimony regarding restricting use of single-use plastic bags. The hearing will be conducted with staff presentation first, followed by other interested persons. Individuals testifying are limited to three minutes. A yellow light will appear at the podium when one minute remains, and a red light will appear when your time has expired. Please conclude your testimony when the red light appears.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. My name is Callie Leinenbach, and I'm a management analyst in the Budget Office. I'll be presenting to you this evening as part of the public hearing for the proposed ordinance restricting use of single-use plastic bags. I would like to formally introduce the staff report and attachments into the record. This process began May 14th, 2018, when city council passed a motion directing staff to research and prepare an ordinance to ban single-use plastic bags in Salem. Staff brought back the requested ordinance to counsel on August 27th, 2018. The proposed ordinance is mirrored after the ordinance passed in, sorry, I forgot to switch. The proposed ordinance is mirrored after the ordinance passed in McMinnville, which has proven to be fair and effective in their community. The purpose of this ordinance is to protect the environment, animals, and human health, and reduce litter and plastic bag waste. The intent is to promote the use of reusable bags in order to reduce the amount of bags in the waste stream and in local waterways. To achieve this purpose, this ordinance proposes that retail establishments will no longer be allowed to provide single-use plastic bags at checkout to carry away purchases. Retailers may make recyclable paper bags or reusable bags available to customers. Most retailers must charge customers at least five cents per paper bag and show this charge on their transaction receipt. This charge is referred to as a pass-through fee in the ordinance and is retained by retailers. There are exceptions to the pass-through fee that will be covered with the exemption information shortly. The ordinance also does not allow distribution of single-use plastic carryout bags at city facilities or at events held, sponsored, or permitted by the city unless stated otherwise in the following exemptions. There are some exemptions for the requirement to charge a pass-through fee and to show this fee on customer receipts. Under the proposed ordinance, retail establishments with 10 or fewer full-time employees are not required but are still allowed to charge a pass-through fee for paper bags. If retailers that meet this criteria do charge, the charge does not have to be shown on the transaction receipt. Also, vendors at farmers' markets or holiday fairs are not required to show the pass-through fee on their receipts. Other exemptions include allowing the distribution of single-use plastic carryout bags for prepared food and takeout food, and that retail establishments may provide a recyclable or reusable bag at no charge for customers with a voucher under the Women, Infants, and Children program, or an Oregon Trail card or other card to access the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance This ordinance only impacts plastic bags to carry away purchases from a retailer. Many plastic bags would still be allowed, such as bags for produce, meat, and baked goods, product packaging, bulk items, and other specified items, such as bags for dry cleaning, potted plants or flowers, or other items where dampness may be a problem, and pharmacy prescriptions. This ordinance would also not impact packages containing multiple plastic bags sold in stores, such as bags used for home food storage, garbage, pet waste, or yard debris. In conclusion, staff recommendation is to advance the ordinance to second reading. If enacted, the city may seek to partner with interested groups to provide broad community outreach and education, as this has been successful in other cities with similar ordinances. I will be available to answer questions following public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a number of folks signed up to comment. Again, just to remind you, you have three minutes. At two minutes, the yellow light goes up, so you have one minute left. When it turns red, if you please stop talking, and I won't have to interrupt you. And that's all, I don't like doing that, so I'm just going to ask you to play along with me here. John Ammison.
He had to leave after bus.
Had to what? I'm sorry.
He had to leave after bus.
Ah, okay. Debbie Miller. Followed by Sarah Deimling. Followed by Paul Cosgrove.
Hello, my name is Debbie Miller. I'm a physician here in Salem in a resident of Ward 7. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for letting me speak. Special thanks to Councilor Anderson for putting this measure forward. I will not take up much of your time, but there are three points I would like to make. First, I'd like to see the fee for paper bags be higher, more like 10 cents as it is in California. This is actually closer to the actual cost of the bag to the retailer, and would be a stronger deterrent. If that is not acceptable, I'd like to see the city revisit the five-cent fee in a year if paper bag use is still high. Second, in proposal, the definition of a reusable bag is phrased as nonplastic. The most common and lowest environmentally impactful bags I see are these polyethylene bags, and they are made of plastic. So I don't know if that's completely accurate the way it's stated. These only have to be used 11 times to be a single-use plastic bag, whereas the cloth bags have to be used over 100 times. My last point is that we recognize that plastic bags are just a small fraction of plastic waste. The largest portion is packaging material, but that is much harder for a single city to control. Some things the city could look at, next though, is looking at styrofoam and other to-go containers and plastic straw use. Also, more education on reducing and recycling since there's still much misunderstanding amongst the public. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilor Cook.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, for coming down and testifying today. I appreciate your lead in the health aspects with this. You'd mentioned the small percentage and looking at things like straws and styrofoam. Are you aware of more comprehensive policies that have passed at city levels that you've become familiar with?
Well, I know there has been experimental things, like in Ashland recently, there was voluntary restrictions on straw use. Part of it is a handicapped, people are, they have to have straws, a lot of them to be able to swallow, so that is a problem. I think plastic straws or some type of straws have to be available for things like that, but I think they should be restricted, and I think they should be, we should look at the use and not just offer them to everybody. They're sort of doing it on a voluntary basis right now. I'm sure there's other cities that have done it. I think Seattle did it for a month as a trial.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Counselor, just a moment. Dr. Miller, just a sec. Counselor Case.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just curious, so you support the five-cent pass-through fee? In fact, you'd like to see it higher. Could you just explain kind of why, your thoughts on why that's necessary?
Well, it's more expensive for retailers than plastic bags. I think the plastic bags are maybe five cents, three cents, something like that for the retailer to buy, and I think, I've seen up to 33 cents, but about 12 cents seems what I see for the paper bags. Also, I think people won't care very much about five cents, at least a lot of people won't. I think they would care more about 10 cents, and I'd like to see it as it's intended to, you know, transition to reusable bags like that.
So I can just ask a quick follow-up. So it sounds like you're primarily in favor of it so people stop using
Exactly.
any kind of carryout bag and to bring their reusable bag. So it's, what I'm hearing is it's not so much to help the retailer out, but it's to deter people from
That would be more of it, yeah.
Okay.
I think they'd notice 10 cents more.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sarah Deimling.
I'd like to start by saying I've been here many times before, and I've usually been here to object to something, and it feels so good to be here to say
Now, tell us who you are before you
yes to something. And to two things, in fact. First, the
Tell us who you are first.
Oh, excuse me.
That's okay.
My name is Sarah Deimling, and I have a house at 2667 Orchard Heights Road Northwest.
Okay, thank you.
And, yes, plastic bags. I have, I think this is honest. I have probably not accepted a plastic bag for 30 years from a store, and that includes the veggie bags, too. And it's partly because I lived in Germany long ago, and there are other countries who have managed this. And I think it's a fantastic idea, and I agree with the former speaker that we have a lot more to do, but it feels so good to be a part of a community that's working on this and that has the Climate Action Plan as part of the strategic plan and is really becoming visionary about the kind of community we want to leave behind us for our children. And this is my purse, and these plastic bags are always, our cotton bags are always in my purse, and they last forever if you get a good one.
Great.
And in addition, being a forest manager who's planted tens of thousands of trees over the years and owning a lot of beautiful trees in the city of Salem, I want to support the Cities for Trees, and that's one, if you have a committee and need help, I'd like to join.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions? Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, so thanks. I didn't catch the cloth bags you said last due for?
Well, I've had them for decades, and they look like it if you look closely. They don't look very But they do the trick. And I have my preferences of ones that you can put over your shoulder comfortably and don't have to carry this way, and then you can carry two on one side.
Very good. Paul Cosgrove. Followed by Evan White.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. Members of the council, my name is Paul Cosgrove. I live in a small city to the north of here called Portland, but I spend most of my time down the street in the state capital working with your colleagues on state policy issues. And I'm here on behalf of the American Forest and Paper Association, the National Trade Association of the Forest and Paper Industry, as well as Northwest Pulp and Paper Association. Our comments are limited to Section 48.040, which is called the pass-through fee. And our concern is that we think that's inappropriate and will have bad results that I will explain in a minute for some reasons I will mention briefly. We would request that that section of the ordinance be deleted if you take further action on this issue. The two issues I want to raise, and these were, I think, influential when this issue came before the City Council in Portland about eight years ago, and they adopted an ordinance banning plastic bags but not including a fee on paper. And the two issues that I think were influential there and still are now, one is an environmental and recycling issue. Paper bags and boxes are the gold standard of recycling programs in this county in which this city is located. It's why this county has one of the highest rates of recycling in the state, and those bags and paper boxes, the craft paper that makes both of those, are what supports all the community recycling programs in this city and in your county. That's what they are useful for, and they're going right back into plants, paper plants in this community and in communities nearby to make new paper bags and boxes. So there's an environmental benefit to having paper bags in the system. It's what supports consumer recycling. But also, the interesting thing about it is rarely can you say you are in the midst of, like Salem is, a 100-mile radius of a completely closed loop recycling process. The bags are both made, recycled, and remade within 100 miles or so from Longview to Springfield, with Salem in the middle of it, and different processing centers around it. That's a kind of a local recycling process that we would hope you would propose to support rather than to harm with a fee. The economic argument is tied to that. We need these bags and we need them recycled in order to keep our paper plants working. These paper plants are important to Oregon's economy. They're the homes of many industrial family wage jobs, and we need that supply of paper. So we would encourage you to delete this portion of the ordinance and to, if you proceed with the rest of it, and to not establish a fee on paper bags. And of course, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Counselor Nagy.
Thank you, Mr. Cosgrove. Question on recycle content.
Yes.
Hopefully, you know the answer to that because I've spoken with some other people, and our ordinance requires a minimum of 40% recycled fiber. What's the average in a craft paper bag of recyclable content? I heard it was actually, the average was 40, which means you could never guarantee at a minimum you would have a 40% bag.
Thank you for the question. I don't know that I can tell you the exact answer except that we have no concerns about a minimum 40% recycled content. Bags manufactured in this market, in this part of the world, have at least 40%. If you bought bags manufactured elsewhere in the country and the world, which is not likely to be the source of your market, that might not be the same, but here, it's not a problem. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and just knowing that those fibers keep getting shorter and shorter so you can only reuse those so many times in a certain commodity.
And that's why you can't always have 100% recycled on an ongoing basis, or that exactly happens, the fibers do wear out after a while. You have to keep replenishing them with some virgin fiber as you re-manufacture them.
Thank you. Counselor McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Paul. For a long time, well, from way back when, when I was actually a working stiff, good to see you again. I have a question. It seems to me, and so I'm going to tell them, work this out, the goal from the point of view of, I think, Counselor Anderson with the five cents is to have people, it's twofold. One, to help recompense to some degree the grocers who are, you know, going to have a different, it's going to cost them more to provide bags, carryout bags, but B is to hopefully give an incentive for the consumers to purchase, you know, not long-term bags, whatever you want, reusable bags. And so I'm wondering, in your case, and since the only bag, they're not going to use reusable bags are paper bags, where does this hurt your industry if the nickel's on there? I'm just curious why you're opposing this.
Let me, if I can, lead into that by responding to a couple of things you said in your preface. First of all, the reusable bags are, in fact, as pointed out, plastic bags. They're actually very thick plastic bags. They're usually almost always made in China. We propose you not penalize a product that's made in Oregon within 100 miles of the city. We think that, in fact, use of paper bags and reuse of paper bags, which a lot of people do by bringing them back to when they shop and use them for other things, is a worthwhile thing that supports the local industry. A fee discourages use of that product and doesn't support the local industry. I'm not sure if that adequately answers your question, but we would prefer you not move from a local product that is recyclable and reusable and generated nearby to something that is a plastic product that is manufactured across the ocean.
Mr. Cosgrove, what's the actual cost of a standard grocery bag, paper bag?
I've seen in your record the kind of data that you just heard from a prior witness, but I went online, and I went online for people who would produce or sell paper bags to somebody like me, an individual, you know, a middleman, a wholesaler, Amazon-type kind of person, except generally smaller than that. The prices range from 3 cents to 7 or 8 cents, and you can, I'm sure, find some that are costing more than that. But I think in a volume purchaser, either by local independent stores working through one of their marketing operations like United Grocers or by the big chains working themselves, can get it at the lower end of that range. The reason that differential of facts on what the price is important is, generally takes three plastic bags to carry what it does one paper bag. So if you're looking at plastic disposable bags versus paper disposable bags, even if there is a price differential, a price increase, you generally take far more plastic bags to carry the same number of groceries than you do one paper craft bag.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Evan? John and Beverly Cochran will be next.
Good evening. My name is Evan White, and I live at 4553 Rock Loop South. Today, I had the great pleasure of being at Archaeology Today, Archaeology Day, at the site of our new police station. It was interesting to see what the archaeologists were digging up and what that says about Salem's early history. Plastic bags. I have a friend who likes to say, "Let's live on this planet as if we intend to stay." What will future generations say about us if they dig up piles of plastic bags? Or worse, what will they say when they find that plastic has entered into the food that they consume? Plastic is not biodegradable. It ends up either in landfills or as litter on the landscape and waterways in the ocean. Kroger estimates that Americans currently recycle less than 5% of plastic bags. Plastic can take hundreds of years to decompose and releases toxins into the soil and water in the process. Littered plastic is a huge problem for the health of wildlife, as many animals ingest it thinking it is food and can have problems thereafter breathing and digesting. The nonprofit World Watch Institute reports that at least 267 species of marine wildlife are known to have suffered from entanglement or ingestion of marine debris, most of which is composed of is composed of plastic. Because Americans throw away an estimated 100 billion plastic grocery bags each year and because plastic is made from petroleum, that requires a lot of fossil fuel-derived energy, and that creates another problem, which I will not discuss tonight. Do plastic bag bans work? According to an article in Scientific American, a plastic bag tax levied in Ireland led to a 95% reduction in plastic bag litter. My understanding is that at least 132 other cities and counties in 18 states have acted to ban plastic shopping bags. "Let's join them and live on this planet as if we intend to stay." I urge you to approve staff's recommended ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Councilor Cook?
Thanks for coming down tonight, Evan, to testify. I just had a question about the proposed fee and any feedback that you've heard.
Well, personally, I would ignore a 5% charge. 10%, I'd walk back to my car to get the bag that I forgot. And I confess, I've not been pure on this subject. I've got bags, and sometimes I forget.
This isn't a confessional. You're good.
For a dime, I will walk back, that's for sure.
Thank you. John and Beverly Cochran, followed by Meg Hammond. If you'd introduce yourselves and go ahead.
I'm Beverly Cochran, and it's 4751 Rahide Court Northeast, Salem, Oregon.
Thank you.
And I'm John Cochran. I live with her.
Okay.
Okay, when do I start?
Anytime you're ready.
Right now?
Yes.
Okay, I disagree with banning plastic bags at carryout purchases in Salem, Oregon. This is Oregon. I was born in Oregon. I know it rains here. It rains a lot. Paper sacks fall apart. I don't know if, any of you don't have to ever carry sacks that are paper, but they fall apart, and you can't get home with them and get it into your house without them falling apart. And it rains a lot here, and they get, plastic ones are, you can use them over and over and over. I do at home. We don't, it's not a one-time thing. We use them over and over. And so, and then putting things in trash can, it keeps it more, the trash can cleaner because you've got them in a plastic thing. You put them in a paper thing, it might get wet if the lid goes open, and then you've got all this mess again. It's unfair to charge five cents per paper bag, whereas low-income customers who receive government assistance do not have to pay five cents. It's not fair for us to all have to pay for everybody else's sacks. Period.
I sometimes work at a farmer's market, so I use the recycled sacks because I can't afford to buy large quantities of paper bags. The other thing has to do with the tax issue. It is a tax. The Ireland experiment is a tax. We don't really like taxes here. I've got a list, I noticed there's the pros got their words in first. They have put a lot of things on the record. I've got 25 names of people who have objections to the plastic bag ban that were also on the record from August 27th till this morning. And some of them brought up, some of them, for example, there's an IT person, there's a CPA, there's some people who have written very well-reasoned explanations why they object to the ban. I do think that a plastic bag can be used for so many different purposes. Besides, one more question is brought up. What about this problem of the permanent pollution? Well, they're building in California a boom to go out into the Pacific Geyer and gather up that big trash thing and recycle it. We have a Covanta over here. We can generate power out of that. And as far as the use of resources, I don't think that the price of building this kind of product is unreasonable because we also have plastic recycling right here in Marion County. So that could be added to the, to the stream with wise management and wise planning.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions, Councilor Cook?
Thank you for coming down, Beverly and John Cochran. I appreciate your testimony. So my question is, as more businesses move away from plastic, we've heard Kroger is planning to phase out, I believe, by 2019, August, April of 2019, phasing out the plastic, single-use carryout bags. What is the game plan if the businesses themselves decide not to offer the service? There are several businesses in town that don't offer that particular service. Do you just not frequent those? What is the plan if this is the way that things are going moving forward?
Well, I object to the penalizing of people who happen to choose to use plastic bags, and I object to the idea that there's going to be some kind of a penalty on a small, if a person has 10 employees or more, they're going to be penalized if they even go and follow the law if they use plastic bags. I object to that, and I think that that's unfair.
Thank you. I just have just a couple more questions. I appreciate it. So with, you brought up the rain issue and also the reusing issue with bags, particularly in regards to sanitation and equity. In looking at businesses moving to this shift, as communities continue to move away from plastic, you had talked about recycling the bags. Are you aware of the changes that have come forward recently to the recycling? You've mentioned Covanta, the incinerator facility. Are you aware of some of the changes that have been before council, within these last few months, or changes within to your own recycling, things that are no longer accepted at the curb?
Oh, yes. We are aware that the recycling has gone through a cycle of its own, which, by the way, is not a permanent thing. Cycle means things going around. So things have gone around, and they'll come around again. If there's innovation, people can find ways of doing that. I do object to the idea that we can't use the, reuse them to put the dog poop in, and we have to buy something instead of just using this as consumers. I think that the convenience of having these things available for multiple uses in the home and various places around is something that the public benefits from.
And also with the garbage rate increase, were you aware of that as well?
Yes, I'm aware that the garbage rate has gone up and that there are limitations. But again, I say that with innovation, there's somebody's going to come up with something that's going to change that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Meg Hammond, Sean Miller after that, and then Michael Roth.
Thank you. My name is Meg Hammond with a U. Sorry, my printing wasn't better.
That's, sorry, I didn't see it.
I relocated to Salem less than a year ago and live in South Salem on Fairview Avenue. As I was riding my bike here, guess what I found blowing along the street? I'm speaking tonight on behalf of 350 Salem, Oregon. We thank Tom Anderson for introducing the ordinance to restrict single-use plastic bags in the city, and thanks city council for considering it. We endorse this proposal and hope it will be approved. We make this recommendation to limit the use of fossil fuels and their effect on climate change and to reduce the immediate environmental impact of all those bags. And I'd like to ask everyone who came tonight, who might have spoken but won't, in favor of this ban, please stand.
Thank you very much. Two weeks ago, Gary Walmart spoke on behalf of 350 Salem, Oregon, and provided a lot of statistics, some of which you've heard again tonight. They were introduced in the late '60s in the U.S. and became widespread in use in the '80s. Some 100 billion plastic bags are used in the U.S. every year, and this takes 12 million barrels of oil to manufacture them. Most of the fossil fuel used to make plastic bags comes from fracked gas, and I will return to that in a moment. Each bag is used, on average, 12 minutes. That's what the internet says. Everybody must live very close to their grocery store. They enter the waste stream, and they end up in our landfills, freshwater, and then accumulate in the oceans. They break up into small pieces that concentrate toxins and persist for up to 1,000 years. They contaminate the food chain. This is already happening. Banning, banning single-use plastic bags is a specific action we can take now. By itself, it is a small thing, but it is a step toward a future that is coming with decreasing use of fossil fuels. My former home for 50 years was southeast Ohio, which you know of as Appalachia. This region was torn up by coal mining, and many streams are still polluted from acid mining runoff. There are also many old gas wells, and these are now being used as dumping grounds for fracking waste from neighboring West Virginia and Pennsylvania, further threatening water supplies. There is nothing pretty about any of the steps in the extraction of fracked gas, the disposal of its waste, or the consequences for the planet. Thank you again for considering this ban. 350 Salem, Oregon endorses this small step toward less use of fossil fuels and protection of the environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Right, thank you very much. Sean Miller, followed by Michael Roth, followed by Cindy Kimball.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett, members of the Salem City Council. My name's Sean Miller. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Northwest Grocery Association and wanted to specifically talk about 48040, the pass-through cost. And I did testify a few weeks ago. And again, the goal of any policy, when you're looking at a sustainable shopping experience, is 100% reusable bags. That's the most sustainable way for looking at a policy. And our experience when looking at any kind of a ban on plastic bags is that it's imperative that you have 48040, the pass-through cost, in any policy, to actually move and change behavior to people using more reusable bags. We know from our experience in every city that has adopted these in the Northwest, this model, Washington and California, that it does work, and the numbers prove that it works. I did hear some differences of costs earlier. We're talking about three cents for a plastic bag versus about 12 cents for a recycled paper bag. An average of between $35,000 up to about $60,000 of a cost difference per store if you ban the plastic bag and do not put any pass-through fee. So essentially, what you're doing, if you do not have the pass-through costs involved, is you're raising grocery prices, because that'll be reflected in the prices of groceries for those that, for everyone in the city of Salem. And those that are now using the reusable bags are penalized. They're doing, they're trying to accomplish that goal of, again, using reusables, and our cost shift will be reflected in groceries. Again, this, it's not about, and I've heard this argument before too, it's not about recouping our costs. It's about changing behavior. We'll still use the recycled paper bags. We want to support the recycled paper bag industry, which, again, from Paul, is in the state of Oregon. It will be our backup, and people will still use them because they still use them today. But we're trying to, again, change that behavior. And I do have some statistics on the difference between five cents and 10 cents to answer your question, if you'd like, Counselor, you know, and we're not advocating for 10 cents. I think it's something that, again, we think the pass-through cost isn't very important. It should be passed with it in there, and I think something, it's something you should look at maybe a year down the road to evaluate the five cents and 10 cents. I do know from our experience in our industry, we just went through this change in behavior in the bottle bill. 2017, we went from five cents, which our stores have been, you know, had a deposit in return of five cents for, against inception of the bottle bill till, till last year. And that redemption rate was going up, going up. It started to decline to about 59% 2017, and when we went, when we went to 10 cents, it went to 82%. So again, if you're talking about changing behavior, this is an absolute real-life example of, again, what, five cents versus 10 cents. I'm not advocating for you to change that.
Thank you, Sean.
Oh, sorry.
Councilor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for coming down, Mr. Miller. I have a question for you. What is stopping your member grocery stores from charging that fee today?
Very good question. Mr. Mayor, city council members, competition. If, the grocery business is one of the most competitive industries, and you'll hear from Michael Roth, who is an independent that has to compete with the chains, who has to compete with Walmart. Competition is so, so hard in this industry and a very low percentage at any additional cost. It's very difficult. And so, all it takes is one, not to do it, and you're getting killed on the price of groceries every week.
Thank you. I have a follow-up. So I shop at Mr. Roth's stores on a regular basis. I did so yesterday, in fact, and I, as I do almost every week. And I, yesterday, happened to remember my reusable bag. I do that about 75% of the time, I'd say. And when I do that in his stores, he gives me a five cent credit. So isn't he already charging me when I, the 25% of the time that I forget my bag, isn't he charging me a fee already? And his store seems to be doing quite well.
Good question, Mr. Mayor. And each store has their own policies, and I think the difference in their study, when you look at getting charged a fee for using the bag versus bringing back the bag and, you know, and you're talking about, can I clarify the question? Are you using the paper bag where you're getting?
Whenever I bring my own bag, regardless of what it is, he gives me a five cent credit for not using one of his.
Yep. No, absolutely. And I think that's a good, again, each, each business is going to have their own model. I'll let, I'll let Michael talk about that because, again, it's a competition in customer service in the industry. And so, again, we encourage that in the, in the industry. But again, without the required pass-through cost involved in this, you know, when you, when you don't bring your bag, that's, that's going to be the, the cost shift on all of our groceries in the city, so.
But isn't he charging me that fee now by not giving me the five cent discount? That's what I'm confused by.
No.
Thank you for your answer. I don't accept it.
Let me clarify.
Stop now, Sean.
I'll let Michael clarify that for you, because that's...
That'll be fine.
We're not done yet.
Councilor Cook?
Thank you for coming down, Mr. Miller. So you'd said that we would see an increased cost in groceries, so with Kroger moving forward with a large national chain that's saying, "We are stepping away from this plastic bag. Here's our timeframe," so we can expect to see an increase in costs nationwide with Kroger?
No, very good question. So again, with, and it's really from a competitive standpoint. They made a business decision. I can't speak for Kroger particularly tonight because I represent the, the industry. And again, they're very competitive, and they made an announcement that I believe is 2025, all their stores, Kroger, the QFC stores in Oregon would be 2019, and then, and then they stair-step that from now. So I can get more information when Fred Meyer would actually move to that. But again, what they're seeing is most of the cities are moving to this anyway. And like I, I think with city, city Salem, Bend, Hillsborough, Lake Oswego, those are all expected by the end of the year, again, if they, if they all adopt. Based on what we've seen statewide, we're going to see most of the state under these ordinances anyway, and they see in all their states moving this direction. So again, Kroger made a business decision in a phased approach. We may see that with the others, but until then, I think this is important policy.
Just a quick follow-up. So it sounds like you're saying they're making a business decision, but because of the highly competitive market, customers are looking for more responsibility in the community from the different businesses that are there, maybe an economic or environmental responsibility standpoint? And that could be driving consumer demand?
I would answer that, that question in this way. I think they, obviously, grocery stores want to do what their customers are asking them to do. And so, I think, again, they're making these decisions based on what they feel from the... based on what they feel from their own business decision. Not all the businesses are doing that right now. So again, a policy like this affects everybody. And I think that's why, if you're going to make that move, it's, it's to affect everybody and to try to change that behavior. But again, each business makes their own business decisions based on what they think their customers want.
Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, and thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Again, into pricing. 3 cents for a plastic bag. I went out onto the Internet two nights ago, and I can buy a pack of 900 single-use plastic bags for 2 cents apiece. And that's me buying, you know, one little packet of them, though on a quantity discount, I've heard numbers closer to like half a cent or less for a retailer to obtain plastic bags.
Yeah.
More 4 and 5 cents for, for a paper, but are not those already incorporated into the cost of the services that that establishment provides? And maybe when plastic came in, it was like, cool, we get more profit? Or we don't raise our prices as much to offset that over time? But that's, why, why should the city of Salem get involved with doing anything to a retailer? What if we didn't like meat and wanted to charge a quarter for every chicken that a grocer sold? There, there's no difference whatsoever in what we're doing right there.
Yeah.
And you're okay with a governmental body telling you how to do your business?
Mayor, members of the City Council, normally not. However, we see, we see the, we see cities moving in this direction. And I think it's something that we've worked out over time with the environmental community, that if you're going to adopt these, this is a way to do it that, again, accomplishes the goals without the increased burden on the retailer and their customers. Again, the customer's the one being affected prices with the cost shift. And as for each individual store, again, each store's going to have different buying power. You know, I could say, you know, the independents are competing with a greater buyer power from the larger chains. Larger chains probably are competing with Walmart. You know, so prices vary. But, and I think in, in the United States, we've had a culture of, you know, a free bag. Well, it's always, it's always in the cost of the, of the product. But it's this perception that you're, you get a free bag. Europe has the opposite, where they don't have a bag.
I don't think it's free.
Yeah. And so, again, we, because of that, we've tried to control our costs as much. And that's why, over time, we've had the plastic bag. With a ban, we're forced to do, make another business decision. And that's, making that has been the difficult part. So I understand your point about government forcing us. You know, I could tell you, I argue against that on a lot of issues. But if something like that is going to pass, it's, you know, again, this, we, this, we felt it was a win-win.
But it sounds like all of, or the majority of the retailers will be doing that anyway. Why do we need to get involved in it if they're already all moving that direction? It's not like we're going to speed them up. We're just going to inconvenience people in the interim.
Yeah, and like I said, I represent various grocery stores within the city of Salem. I know, again, Kroger has made that decision. That's the only one of my members that have, yeah. And that's phased over a period of time. And so, from my understanding, the QFC stores will be the only ones 2019, which won't affect Salem, because I don't believe there's a QFC. It's just the Fred Meyer stores here. So, but again, I represent all of those grocery stores. So I, yeah, I can't speak for Kroger versus in each individual business decisions other than the entire industry.
Okay. Counselor Kaiser.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Miller. So what it sounds like is the 5 cent fee is really, it's for two purposes. The first, as you mentioned, is to try to get, to incentivize people to bring a reusable bag, to decrease reliance on bags in general. The second, though, is to provide a competitive equality among your grocers. But it sounds like, just from you answering these questions, that that is really the purpose of the fee, is to provide what I'll call competitive equality, and maybe less so of the incentive. And I, I guess I don't really necessarily have a, have a question, but I guess I want you to maybe affirm that that really is, that is maybe really the true intent of this fee, is to provide a merchant like Ross to be able to do business against a merchant like Walmart, just by virtue of they're smaller than, than a national corporation.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, yes. I, I think to affirm both those, to, you know, and answer your question, both those are correct. And, you know, but again, we, we know from experience that they both work in other cities. So you are changing behavior. You are incentivizing that. We're not covering our, our costs, but we, what it does, from a cost standpoint, you know, yes, we may have to reduce the number of recycled paper bags, but we still have to buy those recycled paper bags. We still have them as a backup. People are always going to forget, and they're going to need to be able to carry their groceries home. So we're still going to use recycled paper bags and support, you know, that industry. But, but we buy less of them that, again, my members have said, that's not enough to really affect their grocery prices, you know, and their costs. And so, when we've looked at it, you know, from an industry standpoint, that's why they've shared, yes, the quality, you're absolutely right. But it does change the behavior, because we see a definite increase in reusable bags. And if that's the, if that's the goal, then, you know, we are moving towards that goal.
Thanks. Okay. Very good. Counselor Lewis.
Thanks, Mr. Miller, for coming down. I, one question about the Kroger announcement to stop using plastic bags. I would have to assume they'll go to paper bags if they're going to supply bags. But I haven't heard, and maybe I missed it, where Kroger has said they're not going to increase their prices.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I, I can't, I can't answer that question for an individual company, but I could relay that on to them to give you any information.
Go ahead.
I'll be brief.
Okay.
Thank you. So, Mr. Miller, you're here tonight as a, representing the Northwest Grocery, Grocery Association, and that's your subject matter expert territory. We've talked a lot about behavior change. And I was just wondering, the information that you're giving us, it appears anecdotal in nature. I just want to make sure, what are your, what is the science behind the behavior change? What kind of experience do you have outside of anecdotal experiences to make you a subject matter expert in behavior change? Just want to be clear on that. This 5 cents being the motivation for the behavior change. You've seen it work. You've said things we have experienced. This works in other communities. But I, I'm wondering what your qualifications for that behavior change would be?
Well, I don't have a PhD in it, but, but to answer your question, I think, again, it's the experience that my, our grocers have seen in all of the ordinances within Oregon, Washington, and California, where we, we've seen this work. And again, you know, you know, I could just tell you that reusables are up. There is data in some of the other cities. I can't, I don't have that tonight. So I think I encourage you to, you know, look at some of the data in the other cities.
So anecdotally, you can say this is successful?
Yes.
But you cannot clarify as to whether or not this truly generates behavior change, just that it gave you the results you were looking at?
Well, and again, and I just, no, I can't give you data on the behavior, on the behavior change.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, Sean.
Yep, thank you.
Cindy Kimball, Kristin Meyer, then Joyce Judy. Oh, Mr. Roth first. I'm sorry, Cindy.
My name is Michael Roth, and our Roth headquarters is located at 4895 Indian School Road, northeast Salem, Oregon. Mayor Bennett and members of the City Council, I'll answer your question first on, thank you for stopping in the store. The reason we give the nickel is if a plastic bag is roughly, for us, it's about 3 to 4 cents. You know, commodities move around a lot. But if we give you a nickel, I guess in that case, we lost on the plastic. But paper bags cost us, you know, 11, 12, 13. It doesn't move around all the time, even per shipment. So we give you a nickel. Before, you would have cost us 12 cents for a bag. So we're 7 cents ahead. So that's kind of that. On, on the motivation for the nickel, 25 years ago, my wife and I went to Hawaii, and we have, we have outside a bottle bill. And we went to Hawaii, we walked along the road, and down in the ditch was a massive amount of bottles and cans. And you realize that that nickel does keep Oregon a beautiful place and got a beautiful set like Hawaii. And I believe now they do have a bottle bill there to, to sell. Anyway, I sent y'all a letter back on June 6th, and I'm here tonight to make one more, they all have that. They have one more quick point in addition to the letter you received on about June 6th. And that information on the June 6th letter was mostly repeated by the Station Journal in a recent article about banning plastic bags. Ross is not a political organization. We just want to sell groceries, continue to be an important employer of Salem, and a good corporate citizen. I've worked in grocery stores for over 40 years. That's these letters, actually. And, and we've had a few customers use usable bags for approximately 25 years in spite of large signs on the light poles in the parking lots and also signs on the entry doors reminding people to remember the reusable bags. It is extremely common and frequent to hear at the check down, "Darn, I left my cloth bag at home." Unfortunately, single-use bags are then required, and those bags often end up in the waste stream. In McMinnville, where we also have a store, the 5 cent charge for a paper bag has proven to be just enough to motivate a change in behavior. It will motivate consumers to remember their reusable bags and greatly reduce waste by reducing all types of single-use bags. In McMinnville, the first six weeks they started the ordinance over there, basically, any regular customer, we were giving them a reusable bag to use. And, and we really, it was very smooth. And I know from statistics that we're giving a lot more nickels back to like Counselor Hoy in McMinnville, because people are bringing in their reusable bag. And the total bag use is down in McMinnville. And back to the economics of it, it's basically a wash between the price of plastic and the price of paper. You put them together, the grocer, yes, true, does get their nickel, but they also do, I think it's going to be just enough of a motivation for people to remember their bags. Any questions?
Yes. Counselor Anderson, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Roth, for coming down. And thank you for meeting with me to discuss this a while back. Have you, because of your operating in McMinnville under a city that is banning these bags, have you increased your prices in McMinnville from what your, your prices are in Salem or Kaiser?
Absolutely not. It's the exact same prices that we were able to maintain. Now, if we would have $30,000, $40,000 extra price, we would have to tick up prices across the store to make up for that.
But that hasn't happened?
No, it hasn't. Grocery stores is extremely competitive business, especially when you're the small fish rather than the large fish. And, and with, you know, it's, and I believe there was also a quote from a Safeway store director in Carvalis that said, they've, they've, they've had their costs stay the same as well.
And just one follow-up question. And I think you said this when you and I were talking. There was an education process that, that had to go through for both your store employees and for the people who were shopping. And does that connect it to the first six months when you're giving people bags?
Six weeks.
Six weeks, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, once that time period is passed, have you really had any problems with operating under the, the bag ban in McMinnville?
No, it's, you know, the 5 cent charge is in most cities, not most, actually, I don't want to overspeak. But it's in many cities. Customers are used to the nickel charge. And, you know, like someone earlier said, it's just, it works and it, you know, it hasn't been a huge issue. Grocery stores aren't in a, in the business to alienate customers.
One, one, no business.
Want to ask about that?
Yeah, one more. Especially ones that are on really thin margins.
One more, and this is really just a comment about the sign there. I don't need the sign when I'm coming in at the store, at the, the front entrance of the store. I need the sign at the back entrance of my house when I'm coming in.
That's a point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, this is under $50, thinking de minimis gift. I think you could take it home. I think it makes the cut, right? Where's the attorney's here?
Thanks again for coming down, Mr. Roth. And I appreciate the sign on the pole, because just yesterday, I literally got five steps from my car, saw the sign, turned around, went back to my car, grabbed my bag. So I actually appreciate it. You'd think I'd change my behavior right now, but I haven't. I'm just curious. I think you have about five stores in, in the Salem area, and I think three of them are actually in the city. Two of them, the two I happen to shop at, are outside of the city limits. Do you intend to, to get rid of plastic in all five?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Counselor Cook.
Thank you for coming down, Mr. Roth. I appreciate independent grocers coming to testify, and I appreciate you adding that lens. You talked about being a small fish. Full disclosure, even though I live right up the street from one of your stores and shop there quite frequently, eight years of my life was spent in another local independent grocer that also doesn't use or offer plastic bags, offers the reusable 5 cent, 10 cent charge, depending on the items that you bring in. I've been really happy with the growler station and the reusing of the bottles that you've allowed with both the kombucha and brews on site. So I think having that larger lens for recycling is really great. And thanks for the hatch chilies.
No, thank you.
Go ahead. Counselor Kaiser.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Roth, also for coming down. And I actually primarily shop at your West Salem store, and I see that sign all the time, and I always forget. So I guess a follow-up question to Counselor Hoy is, for your stores located outside of Salem, would you also be implementing a 5 cent pass-through fee as well?
You know, the lightning bolt just hit me when you said that. That's going to be interesting.
Because there, I mean, most people probably wouldn't know that they're not within city limits, just because of our boundaries.
Yeah, I believe it's just the Lancaster and the ones that, Haysville's inside the city. I do not, yeah. Yeah. Because, you know, it's just Lancaster. That one's going to be interesting. But I think consistent, I'm sure that Wincole on the one end and Safeway on Silverton Road, if they're in the program, I think it's important to be consistent.
I'd be happy to talk with you about annexation issues. Because I'd love to have your store in my ward. It's just, it's a little carve-out out of my ward.
Like I said, I'm not, we're, we're not a political organization. We smile and sell groceries.
Mr. Roth, you have a green plastic bag. Is there anything unique about that green plastic bag?
Great question. Yes, those are some percentage, and I don't have it off the top of my head, post-consumer plastic waste. You know, unlike the, sorry, you're referencing, you know, Orville always taught me, "It better be a live coward than a dead hero." So we didn't just step out and arbitrarily get rid of plastic bags. But we did our best. Those green bags we use, that's the way they're colored, green. Those are some fairly high percentage of plastic that's been reused. And also, for what it's worth, we also take back massive amount of plastic, and it all goes into Trex decks.
Okay.
All the, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Cindy Kimball and Chris Lee Meyer.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Kimball, and I live in Ward One at 1260 Twenty-first Street. And I really appreciate all the information that has been shared tonight, and I feel it's very difficult to follow those last two speakers. They had a great act, but, so I just wanted to make this brief, so as not to repeat too many other people, but I wanted to thank Tom Anderson, Counselor Anderson, and the Salem City Councilors for asking the staff to draft the ordinance that we're listening to tonight to reduce the use of single-use plastic bags in our community and to protect our environment, which is really the big issue here, not just that we have these plastic bags that we don't use, but they, it's to protect our environment, that's the big thing. I have postcards here that were signed by over a hundred and twenty-five Salem citizens after we saw a documentary about plastics in our environment and listened to a presentation by a staff member from Oregon Environmental Council. So I wanted to present those tonight. Do I give them to you? Yes, there you go. So I encourage you to support this issue. It's, it's just the beginning. It can be changed, but I hope that you support a yes vote on this ordinance. So, and I just wanted to put in a plug for Sally Cook's Beehive issue regarding looking into the beehives in the city of Salem, because I'm a seventh-generation beekeeper, and bees don't sting unless they're threatened, and then they die. They don't live. So they're not wasps, they're bees. So, anyway.
Great. Thank you, Cindy. Anyone else got a question? Okay. Kristen, followed by Joyce Judy, then Peter Bergel.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Christine Mayer, and I'm a new resident of Salem. I've been here for about a year. I moved here from Boulder, Colorado. I'm a recent graduate of University of Colorado Boulder in Environmental Studies and a new student, actually, I'm a second-year student at Willamette Law. And I wanted to come today because I was really excited when I heard that Salem was being such a progressive city. And coming from Boulder, I watched that happen. I watched people go through that transition. I watched people resist, and I watched people eventually adapt. And that was the message that I really thought I wanted to bring today, is that we're adaptable, and we've been through this before. I watched when paper bags were replaced with plastic. Many of us here watched that, and people were every bit as resistant to those changes as we are now. But we know more now. We have more education. We understand what other impacts it's having and, and how far plastic is, is, how far it's spread. We find it in the most pristine of places. I've seen it on fourteen thousand foot cliffs, where people who felt like they were doing the right thing by bagging up their doggie doo, but those bags still go into landfills, and they, they have no integrity, they rip open, they get caught in the wind. If they're not buried for a thousand years, and they do end up in our oceans. And I've seen it, and it is important, and it's so important that we take a stand and make a change for future generations. This is our purpose, and I think we can adapt. So I would like to say thank you, and that I'm very much in support of this.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. Joyce Judy.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. My name is Joyce Judy, and I live in Ward Two. The proposed plastic bag ordinance is one thing we can do out of many things that need to be done to reduce Salem's waste and improve our environment, but this is a great first step. We have been hearing about other cities doing this, so I believe people are aware that this has been coming. While single-use plastic bags may be recyclable, they are being recycled and are clogging our rivers and oceans. I would like to add one change to the ordinance. It says WIC and SNAP users won't be charged a fee. The word should be changed from uses to presents. These cards don't provide all of the food needs for a family, and so they may not use their card, but could present it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Peter Bergel, you're up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Peter Bergel. I live on Fairmont Hill, just on the edge of Tom Anderson's district. And about six years ago, I spoke to Counselor Laura Tesler about this very issue, said we, I was horrified by the statistics that people like Evan were mentioning here tonight about the, the effects of plastic bags in our environment. And I said to Counselor Tesler, can't we do something about this? And she said, well, I'm all in favor of it, and I'll see what we can do. And she came back and told me later on that I, we don't have the votes. And I think we now do have the votes because I've been thrilled to see the changes in the council over the last few years. So I hope you do have the votes to pass this. I'm very much in support of it. But I do want to say that it's only step one, as the previous speaker said and one other person. We've got a long ways to go. I was looking at a, at an article in, on the internet a few days ago that showed the, what, what's going on in the Netherlands, where they have, they've just opened a store that has taken the policy of there will be no plastic of any kind in our store. And they showed a few pictures of how they're doing that. Now, one thing that really kind of excited me was to think about the opportunity rather than the, the other, you know, than the negatives about this. And there's a great article right here, I'm going to leave it with you when I'm, when I'm through here. Says this plastic bag is a hundred percent biodegradable. It's made out of cassava, and it's being made in Bali. And they're making these things, and they, they degrade in a very short amount of time if they do get into the environment. So there's, there are possibilities along these lines. It's also talks about, it also talks, you know, we, we have a whole lot of these covers that go on top of, of coffee mugs. They, well, they made, they've made a coffee mug that doesn't, doesn't have that anymore, and it works really good. So there are a lot of opportunities here, and I think we should really think about that. So if, we could be, we could be the Bali of the United States, or at least the Northwest, and we could be producing these, these things and maybe selling them to other people who aren't as enterprising as we are. So I encourage you to, to push us in that direction, take this step, and then move it forward, and let's get plastic completely out of every place where it doesn't absolutely need to be. Thank you very much.
Counselor Cook.
Thanks for coming down, Peter. I really appreciate your perspective on this. Would you feel like, in talking about the effect of the plastic bags, viewing this as the opportunity rather than the negative, do you feel that the same amount of excitement were to be generated around this if we were to move from calling it a ban to something more positive that still has the same effect? Do you have any suggestions?
Well, if you could think, if you could think of a, of a way to market it, that, you know, from my experience doing political work for a long time, the word ban is not a very happy, happy word for a lot of people. And, you know, and so, people tend, and, you know, somebody spoke here earlier, the folks over there spoke earlier, they don't like the idea of a ban. But I think there are ways to emphasize the, the opportunistic aspects of this, and so maybe there is a, a way to, to market this that doesn't use that word. And if so, I think that would be a, a good thing to do.
And just as a follow-up, so, do you think, I know you're talking about the effect on the environment, people have talked about future generations. Is this something that should be able to find support within people that you've heard testify earlier, people that are concerned about where things are going, where that line's going to be? Should it be important that that language includes people in a way that would be more positive?
Well, I think it's always, you know, get more flies with sugar than you do with vinegar, you know, so it's always good to be positive if you can be. But it's also important that people understand the magnitude of the problem, and I, I think a lot of people don't. I heard the other day that the gyre, or the gyre, or however you pronounce that, in the Pacific Ocean is twice as wide as the state of Texas and twice as deep as the Empire State Building. And you start thinking about that, and you say, wait a minute. And we start thinking about all these fish getting the plastic inside of them that we are then catching, and, you know, those of you who are not vegetarians are eating them. And, you know, so you're getting it into yourselves. So you've got plastic waste in your own body. And even, even when it's, breaks down, you've still got the nanoparticles.
So it sounds like you're saying it's not very cost-effective or a best practice to maybe put a giant sieve through the entire ocean?
You know, I don't know anything about that.
Thank you very much.
Until they mentioned it this evening, and, you know, but I think it's always a mistake to disperse things that you don't want in your envi, environment, through the environment, and then has to, have to figure out how to collect it. Always a mistake. You want to keep it out of the environment, you keep it out of the environment. By not making it in the first place, you stop making it by taking away the market for it.
Thank you, Peter.
That's what I think this does.
Tim Roackeck, I apologize for saying that wrong, I know.
Mayor Bennett, members of the city councils, Tim Roackeck, and I've been called worse, thank you.
We all have.
I'm the CEO of Garden Services, and our main office is located 500 Hawthorne Street, Southeast. I'm here to speak in favor of the ban on plastic bags. First off, thank you to everyone for their attention to the environment, sustainability, and recycling. We really appreciate that. We are the processor of much of the recyclables that are generated in this area, as well as some from out of the area, and we employ approximately a hundred and sixty people with and without disabilities processing recyclables and turning them into usable commodities. We thank you to everyone in this area who recycles. You are providing job opportunities for people who have difficulty finding work. There's a lot of general awareness of the environmental damage that plastics can do, and that's largely the motivation behind this, but I want to make you aware of another aspect, another hazard that plastic bags create that most people aren't aware of. Somebody mentioned about plastic bags being recyclable. This is what I call theoretically recyclable, because plastic bags are indeed recyclable, but they must be separated and collected separately from all other recyclables. That is not the way it is done typically. So there are a few brave souls who collect all their plastic bags and actually take them to a store that accepts those. That is a very small percentage of the plastic bags. A lot of them end up in the ocean and in the environment, but I got to tell you, not all of them do, because a lot of them end up wrapped around my equipment in my recycling facility. Two hours every day, we take a crew, not just one guy, we take a crew, we put safety gear on them, we harness them up, we shut down the equipment, we lock out the equipment, and for two hours, we clean the recycling bags with a cutter to get them off the moving parts of our recycling processing equipment. That's because they come mixed in with everything else that leaves the households in our area. It is a very expensive and time-consuming and dangerous process. So there is a cost that goes beyond the cost that you see in the environment. There's a cost to process recyclables with the plastic bags mixed in. Thank you, I'll take any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Counselor Hoy.
Just a quick one. What I think I heard you say is that the, that plastic bags have never, or, and should never go into the, to the blue bins. Is that correct?
Could you say that again, please?
The plastic bags should never and have never gone in the blue bins. Is that correct?
Yes, that's exactly correct. Thank you very much for that question.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Jeremy Basurto. Greg Peeden.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Greg Peeden. I live up in unincorporated Yarmouth County outside of Newburgh. I'm here tonight on behalf of the American Progressive Bag Association, which is the trade association for plastic bag manufacturers and other plastic products. You've had a lot of testimony, both pro and con, tonight, and I think in the, in the past about the deciding over a ban. I'm not really here to argue against the ban, although I think by assumption you could say that we would be opposed to a ban, but rather I'm, I'm here to ask for an amendment to the proposed statute. As I've listened to the debate tonight, and as I think the, the record indicates, what you're focused and, and on, and, and considering is a ban on the, the single-use plastic grocery bags that people have held up tonight in example. There is a part of your ordinance that we would like, or ask you to remove, which is to, that would include plastics of a thicker, the way that you delineate this plastics is by, by milliliter. So there's language in the, in the ordinance that talks about banning bags of a, of a thicker milliliter, a two-point-two to four-point milliliter. We think that is unnecessary. We think it is outside the scope of the public debate that you've had and the focus of, of what your community is, is discussing. It reaches and, and attached to a product that's not been contemplated or, or discussed here tonight at all. The best example that I can think of, of, of discussing what I'm talking about is if you were to go to a different retailer, and I think this is, again, in your ordinance, these retailers would be captured under this ordinance. Let's say it's a, a Meyer &amp; Frank or a J.C. Penney, and you were to buy a garment of some sort, a suit or any other part of clothing, and they would place that in a plastic bag. That, that plastic is of a thicker material than the plastic bag that you've been discussing this evening. But as I read the ordinance, there, that would be a definition of a retailer, and that plastic bag would be banned by that product. We think that's unnecessary. Of all of the evidence that's been talked about here in terms of plastics, plastic bags and the waste, waste stream and things like that, I don't think anybody's contemplated that, and so we'd ask you to consider removing that from the ordinance. With that, I'm happy to take questions.
Counselor Anderson.
I've got one.
Yes, sir.
And I know what a, a plastic grocery bag looks like when I see it. I don't know what two-point-five millimeters are the, what you're talking about, so let's use another thing that I think we all use, a Ziploc bag. What's the thickness of a Ziploc bag as opposed to the retail grocery bags we're talking about?
Right. Again, those are, if you, if you just, it's kind of hard to picture in your mind, but if you just kind of think through the, sort of the touch of them, they are thicker than, than the bag that you're contemplating here. Different, there are different thicknesses to different Ziploc. You can, sort of by price, you can sense that, that some are thicker than others.
Well, then let's go the other way. How does the Ziploc bag compare to the garment bag?
I'm sorry that we're, I'm chuckling because we're getting into a...
Of course we are.
A level of, of milliliters of thickness that is hard for me to describe appropriately, but, but, but I understand your point, and, and that is, there are a variety, and that's why I think probably in your ordinance, you described the two-point-two to four milliliters, thinking of that as pretty thin difference, right? But that, there is a difference there. I think our point is really is that you're contemplating the, the grocery bag. These other bags, I think, are, have been out, at least as I, as I've heard and I've read your record, are really outside of your discussion, and that's why we're hoping that you would consider excluding them.
Counselor Kaiser.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Peeden.
Yes.
Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Thank you. So, take the dry cleaner example you provided. What, what is an alternative for that retailer if they didn't have a thicker plastic bag to use?
I, to be honest with you, I don't know what the answer is. The purpose of those bags are, are very self-explanatory. They keep you from, you're gone from getting wet, they keep it from getting dirty, they're extremely handy, and, and they also can keep it from getting wrinkled. So they, they serve a value that, that is customers' like. What, what could be the replacement for those? I, I don't know.
I was just curious if you had seen something out there?
No, I don't, not, not, not that I'm aware of.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Kaiser. My dry cleaners offer recyclable, reusable dry cleaner bags.
Ms. Peeden, you've had a chance to read this. Have you looked closely at the definition to determine if there is anything in there that would preclude the Penny's sale bag or Meyer &amp; Frank bag where you get your shirts or whatever? Is that, this tends to contemplate fruit, vegetables, nuts, grains, candy, and small hardware items. It doesn't mention shirts and underwear.
I don't, I apologize, Mr. Mayor. I don't have the ordinance written for me, but I was referring specifically to the...
Just to the, the gauge.
And the language.
Are there no heavy-gauge, single-use plastic bags for groceries, then? It's all that?
Not, right, not to my knowledge, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All righty.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Just get on up here and let's hear your names and where you're from.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett, members of the council. For the record, my name is Charlie Plyben. I'm the Oregon Policy Manager for Surf Rider Foundation.
Charlie what?
Charlie Plyben.
P.L.
Y.B., as in Bravo, O.N. as in Nancy.
Great. Thank you.
I am here to support the city council's ordinance before you today. I have submitted some testimony for the record on the actual ordinance itself. Those are not substantive changes that would change the policy itself. They are based on, frankly, working on over a dozen of these policies, administration and implementation. So they're recommendations that I think you could table for now, but I would come back to some of those as they may be helpful during your implementation process. I'm not going to try and reiterate what others folks have spoke to, but I do want to try and address some of the questions that I heard from the councilors. One, I am not an expert in behavior change, but I have read a lot of studies in behavior change, and so I want to give you some numbers here from some of those studies. In San Jose, when they implemented a fee, they went from four percent reusable bag use to sixty-two percent reusable bag use. In Washington, D.C., when they implemented a fee, they went to a sixty percent decrease in all carryout bags. This is definitive evidence to me that this works. In Ireland, when they implemented a ninety, when they implemented a fee, ninety-five percent... In Ireland, when they implemented a 90, when they implemented a fee, 95% reduction in the amount of bags used. So this is, this is pretty substantial, and I think it substantiates the fact and the claim that there is behavior change. Now, why we want that fee may be different for me, an environmentalist who's interested in behavior change versus a grocery association who's looking for a level playing field for their industry to cooperate on. What's unique about this policy is that we both agree on that. It's rare that you find environmentalists and business folks coming together supporting policy like this. So I want to say that I do support the policy. I do see opportunities to improve the policy. However, I think the city of Salem should be proud in that I've worked on every single policy in the state of Oregon, and this is the strongest policy I've seen. So that's all I have, and I'll take any questions that folks have.
Thank you. Counselor Lewis.
You mentioned three, two cities here in the United States and then Ireland as far as when they implemented a fee, the success of using the reusable bags. Can you tell us what those fees were?
In San Jose, it was a five cent fee, and in Washington DC, it was a 10 cent fee.
And Ireland?
In Ireland, I believe it's a 10 cent. I have to go back and look at the study. I, I do want to provide anecdote for what happens when you don't include a fee, and you can look at the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability from the city of Portland, who implemented a policy in 2011 that I worked on. In the first year, there was a 491% increase in paper bag use. That's what happens when you don't implement a fee. So there's a reason why the paper industry is very interested in keeping that fee out of here. That represents a 491% profit margin for them. So for, for us, I, I think this substantiates the fact that a fee is, is necessary and does encourage behavior change.
One of the fee structures I've seen overseas, I'm not sure if it isn't the one used in Ireland, is you pay for the plastic bag. You pay like a nickel for, for the lightweight plastic bag, a dime for a little heavier, and then one that's pretty well reusable, you'll pay like a quarter. And that, I, in watching it being used, everybody had their paper, or their cotton bags with them rather than pay the fee. It seemed like a really successful, as a dis, sort of a disincentive to plastic bags. Have we got anything like that going on anywhere? I'm just curious.
There's a lot of psychological studies on behavior changes that say that disincentives are much more powerful than incentives.
Really?
We've talked a lot about that and around that, but-
Because I'm looking at the way people buy gas. Where they'll, they'll drive 10 miles for a penny-
That's a great example.
-penny a gallon. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much, Charlie. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thanks for letting me speak. I, I didn't know you had to sign up.
And what's your name?
Patrick Spencer, and I live at 565 Oxford Street. I'm the Executive Director of the Cork Forest Conservation Alliance. We're a nonprofit forest organization. It's quite strange to be working to preserve the Mediterranean cork forest from a, an office in Salem, Oregon, but we can talk about that another time. One of the things that we work on and have been working on for 10 years is the effect of plastics, because as, as the wine industry changes and screw caps and plastic closures are becoming more prevalent, and cork is, cork is now getting back on the upswing, but for the most part, there's been a shift, about 40% shift. And we've looked at the impact that plastic closures have on our environment, and everyone has said brilliant things tonight. I won't reiterate any of them, but what I would like to say is, we need more education on plastic. I think it's, one of the things that the plastic industry has done brilliantly is to impact us to believe that if we recycle something, it's good, but it's not. Every single piece of plastic that's ever been produced on this planet since the first piece is still here, if it hasn't been burned, and it's never going away. You can make plastic from biofuels, you can make it from sugarcane, but once it's plastic, it's plastic, and it never goes away. And in that, we have duped ourselves into thinking that if we recycle plastic, that's somehow better. So if we take 5,000 Coca-Cola bottles and we turn them into a plastic bag, and we take that bag to the grocery store, we feel like we've done a good thing, because we put our stuff in their blue bin, and now we have a reusable plastic bag. But all we've done is postpone the inevitable. That plastic bag is going to break, and you're going to put it in your garbage can, and those 5,000 Coke bottles that we used all that energy to create that plastic bag is just going back into the landfill where the 4,000, 5,000 Coke bottles started out. So we need to take a better look at plastic, its use, and our reliance on it. It's ubiquitous in this society, and we need to change that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that's everyone who has signed up. It's a chance now to ask questions of staff. Counselor Anderson.
Kelly, I'm interested in the issue raised by Mr. Peeden about the thickness of the bags. We had a email exchange earlier today, and also does it, how the ordinance itself would relate to the bags you get when you buy a suit at Meyer &amp; Frank or Fred Meyer or someplace. How, how does that relate?
So there's a few different issues. First off, the reason why those were excluded was because we started with the McMinnville ordinance, and those thicker plastic bags are not allowed. So as far as garment bags, the, the bags that are described in the ordinance have handles, so a garment bag wouldn't qualify for that. Now, a, a normal shopping bag where you go and buy an article of clothing, that, that would be, like, say from JCPenney's, for instance, that would be banned under the current language in this ordinance.
I'll defer more questions for now. I'll let everybody else-
Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kelly, thank you for the report.
Yeah.
I know that when Counselor Anderson proposed this in March, I don't believe I was able to talk with you, but I did talk with other people in the department about a more comprehensive waste approach, and we looked at some other ordinances from other cities, but I don't see them included in the staff report. Was there a reason that they couldn't be included in that?
It was, we just went with the scope of the initial ordinance to do research and bring back an ordinance. So I do remember our discussions, and I did speak with Ryan, but they were just outside the scope of the initial ordinance, so we didn't bring anything back on that.
Okay, so is this something that you would need direction from council in order to look at moving towards a more sustainable waste policy, like a zero-waste ordinance or more comprehensive policies in general, like were spoken about this evening?
Yes, exactly. We would need further direction from council.
Thank you.
Counselor Lewis.
Thanks. I have a couple of questions, and one of them, I think, was already asked by Counselor Anderson, but I, I don't know if I caught it. These bags that you will see, the plastic bags that they put clothes in at TJ Maxx and Ross Dress for Less and Marshalls, they will be affected by this ordinance?
Yes, they would.
Okay. The other thing that was brought up, I think it was Counselor Nanki mentioned that you can go on the internet and buy a rule of plastic bags for about 2.5 cents each, if you buy enough. And this ordinance would not affect that at all.
No.
Okay.
No, any, any multiple, any packages with multiple bags in one package for personal use, you could still buy those.
So I wouldn't have to go on the internet? I could go to Costco?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I got another question that's kind of odd, but if I bring a plastic bag to a grocery store, are they going to have to refuse to fill it, or because I bring it in, are they going to be able to use it?
Yes, you can still bring your own plastic bags, if you choose, to a retailer and have them fill your bag, any type of bag, but they just won't be able to distribute those types of bags.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Casey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kelly, you were saying a little bit earlier that I'm trying to differentiate from like a garment bag versus a carryout bag. Is that the handles, it sounds like?
Yeah.
So I'm looking through the ordinance, and I just did a quick search here, and the carryout definition does not say handles in it. And I'm wondering if we're-
Let me check.
-differentiating that specifically. Handles, that, that might be important to, to include, but I'm just wondering why that's not in there. And then also, I noticed after talk, after Mr. Peeden testified that under carryout bag, we do have, a, a carryout bag does not include in Section B laundry, dry cleaning bags, or bags sold in packages, blah, blah, blah. So it, it does actually call out an exemption for those types of retailers, but I'm just wondering if the handle is like the thing that's going to define-
So, so I did misspeak. The product or produce bag specifically references a bag without handles, but the carryout bag does not. It's just at the point of sale.
Okay. I'm also wondering, the definition of reusable bag has in it nonplastic.
Yeah.
Now, I have quite a few reusable bags that are made out of plastic, or coated in plastic, or just plastic in general. I'm just wondering where that came from, because that's, that's actually going to exclude a lot of, you know, reusable bags or the types of bags that a retailer could sell if they, if it can't be a, an, a plastic bag or something like fiber with plastic.
So that language also was called from the McMinnville ordinance.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I was interested in the point raised by Ms. Judy about people who use WIC cards and SNAP cards and Oregon Trail cards versus people who have them. And I think her distinction she was trying to make was, if you show up and you're buying something that, that you might not be eligible to buy on your WIC card or your EBT card, but you show your card, will you be exempt in that situation from the 5 cent?
I think the point of the, of that section is if you have the card.
Yeah.
So maybe it's worth clarifying that, but-
And I think that, to me, is what I understood it to be, and I think that's what the general public would understand it to be. Now, if you could go back to your slide presentation, and I'm interested in the one where, I think your bullet point said something like pet waste yard debris.
Let me get there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Let me get there. I'm going the wrong way, sorry.
It's someplace there.
There we go. Yeah, it was in my comments.
Oh, okay.
But this was the slide.
Okay. So I, I guess the point I was thinking of is if you're buying vegetables and fruit and meat and other things in the plastic bags, those could be used for yard debris or pet waste, I would presume.
Yes.
Yeah. And was there any other point you wanted to make in, in your comments about pet waste yard debris?
No, it was just mostly that you could still purchase those types of bags in a package as a customer, as a consumer.
Sort of like Counselor Lewis and Counselor Nanki were talking about, about buying the bags.
Yes.
And that would be similar bags to when you go to any city park, you've got the, the, I don't know what you call it, the, the pet bags.
Yes.
There, yeah, there's some sort of funny name for them, but yeah, that's the same sort of thing. Okay, thanks.
I wanted to know if you did, did you do outreach to affected retailers? I mean, were grocery stores alerted, or is it just by the news media who's characterized this as a grocery store-focused issue?
We have not done additional outreach to the community. We just researched what other cities had done, and then we received input from Ross and the Grocers Association to start with McMinnville, so that's where we started.
But did you talk to the book bin about the impact on their business, or Willamette University on their business, or any of the other-
No, we have not done-
Ross's, or?
We have not done outreach in that way.
Okay. Do you think they're aware of what's going on here tonight?
I mean, it's been in the paper multiple times. I can't say whether they're aware, but-
Okay. Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay, I'm just getting the feeling they might not, because we haven't heard from anyone but the grocers. I just, just a thought. I'm just a little concerned. But I, but I think I get it. Okay, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like the idea of making sure everyone's on board. I keep coming back to the testimony of it being an opportunity. I did, I did uncover during this process in March that the mutmits themselves, it's my understanding that the city, through Parks Foundation, the mutmits are in fact the biodegradable blend of plastics, so something that does break down, and that was chosen on purpose because of the environmental impact, the sanitation need and the other. Is that something you can verify through your-
We posed that question to Robert Chandler, and he verified that the packaging indicates that they are biodegradable.
Thank you very much.
What was the answer again? I'm sorry, we were-
They are biodegradable.
But they are, but they are precluded by this ordinance, right?
So the definition of single-use plastic bag includes compostable bags and biodegradable bags that are made of plastic.
Okay.
So single-use bags that are prohibited also include biodegradable.
But they're curiosistic.
Yeah.
They're not, they're not much of a-
No, you're not really buying anything in those.
Are they, are they or aren't they included in this?
And you buy them on mass, right? You don't buy them. So the regulation 48030 says no retail establishment will provide or make available to a customer a single-use plastic carryout bag. I, I don't think the retailers are providing mutmits, but-
So they will, they'll be okay.
Yeah. It's not a green card. They're not providing carryout.
Okay. Are we going to get a motion here? Last question, or do you have a question?
I do have a question. Thank you. Curious as to how the 10 employees was used as kind of the threshold for requiring both implementation of this ordinance, but also the fee and how that's recorded on the receipt. Where did that come from?
Yeah, that was also in the McMinnville ordinance.
Okay. So it was just kind of taken just from that?
Yeah, it was.
Okay. Do you have any idea how many under 10 shops we have in Salem, or how many, or maybe over 10? I don't know. Do we have any kind of breakdown about that statistic for retailers?
You know, I wasn't able to get that specific information. I was able to determine that there would be about 150 retailers that would be impacted in the first round, which were over 10,000 square feet, but I wasn't able to get the information. I, I would be happy to look and bring that back.
And then also, yeah, my other question was the 10,000 square feet. How was that? Was that just taken also from the McMinnville ordinance?
Exactly.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Lewis.
One last question, thanks. I, in the testimony tonight, there seems to be, at least what I heard, a correlation between the success and the fee. And I don't recall seeing it in the staff report, any kind of measurement or metrics about that. Do you have any, any comment? It appeared to me that at a lower fee, you have a lower success, at a higher fee, you have a higher success.
You know, it was very difficult to find data surrounding these issues, but I know that the fee is common in these ordinances. That's what I can say for sure. I, I'm not an expert, so I have, I couldn't say for sure whether that drove change or whether it was something else, but they are common in these types of ordinances.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm going to, let me close the, get everybody done. I'm going to close the public hearing. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I move that the, we advance the second reading for enactment ordinance bill number 20-18 restricting use of single-use plastic bags.
Second by Osik. Go ahead.
Well, we've had a long hearing, and there's been a lot of people testifying here today, so I'll try not to make it much longer. I will say that when I originally introduced this motion, I had a short legal memo of about two or three pages that I submitted with it, so I stand by what was said in there. I, I want to talk just briefly about the three Rs of, of, not reading, writing, arithmetic, but reduce, reuse, recycle. And to me, that relates a bit to the issue about the, about the 5 cents fee. I think that it's kind of a carrot and a stick approach. It's pretty much a carrot for- It's pretty much a carrot for the merchants, and it's a stick, but a small stick for the, for the consumers, because there is a charge if they don't get their own bag. But I think one of the real importance of that is to reduce. We heard the gentleman from the Cork Society, Preservation of Cork Society, Mr. Spencer, say that even if you recycle, 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 at the end of that recycle, there's going to be a stop, and it's, the plastic is still going to be here. So it seems to me that, that one of the goals of this ordinance is to reduce the use of that. And if you reduce this type of use, you won't have to recycle, and one way you reduce is by, by reusing. So I really don't have much else to say, except I think we ought to move this forward, and, and join the other cities in Oregon, and across the United States and the world, and recognize that single-use plastic bags are a problem. I would agree with Counselor Cook that there is a whole lot more that needs to be done on this, and I am though we will be moving forward on other areas of waste reduction, and, and, but this is a step that we can do now, and we ought to do it. Thanks.
Thank you. One thing I'd like to just mention, just as an aside, I hope that as we get paper bags, the grocers will also save boxes. Those are so handy for moving, that's what I grew up with, was the use of cardboard boxes. And I notice now cardboard boxes tend to disappear quickly into the recycling system, so I hope we can get those and let me recycle them for them. It's one of the attractions at a number of retailers who actually hang on to their boxes. They're really pretty useful items, makes it a lot easier, as I think the description of some of the problems people think they will experience by losing plastic bags, that boxes would be a helpful item to have. But don't charge them a nickel for them, just give them the darn box, huh? Okay? Yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have mixed feelings about this, about this item coming forward, and part of what the holdup seems to me, I really am, I'm just struck with the testimony that we had from Kristin Mayer, talking about how adaptable we are, how inspiring we can be in the community, and from Peter Burgele, talking about how this is an opportunity. A lot of the language in the amendment, especially given the name, as you talked about with the publicity, it seems to leave some confusion as to why it's not doing more, or make people maybe feel that this is something that is going to be difficult to enforce, or have other issues along those lines. It's really just a problem with, with that language in general. And then also, as Counselor Anderson mentioned, we're passing this ban, or we're passing this resolution, but there's still so much more to encompass, making sure that because we're not first in the line of this, that we don't stop this work. We've talked about styrofoam, we've talked about other bags. That's something that I'm curious about, to see as far as other opportunities within the work here tonight in this discussion. It would be nice to be able to have that discussion with this body. I understand it's late, but I think it's important.
Okay. Any further discuss, yes, Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, and I think the discussion needs to be with the entire community, because I have a feeling that very few of them know. I'm not opposed to ban, that's my initials, but I'm opposed to banning items. Just to throw in a, a humorous pun in, before I go the other direction. Life cycle assessment, I had mentioned them during our original meeting where we discussed this, and actually, our first speaker this evening...
Debbie Miller.
Miller, yeah. The physician, so it might be Dr. Miller. Talked about cloth bags versus the other, and that information was supported in my life cycle assessment research as well, where I think it was like 137 times you had to reuse a cloth bag before you equaled the environmental benefits. The, and it's not just energy, it's, it's across the board. The paper bag takes 20 times more water to process. It doubles the greenhouse gas emissions. Municipal solid waste is five times that of the, the single-use plastic bag. Fossil fuel usage is eight times for the paper bag, and total energy used is, is three times. There was also Clemson University lead life cycle assessment I looked at, and that's where the, over the 100 times came in as well. They also, inside of that looked at litter, the Clemson one here as well, as far as people's habits, and even people who don't like, there's a few here that I heard in testimony tonight that have not used a plastic bag in maybe generations. But that's not the case. Even people say, who they say don't like the single-use plastic bag, 40% of the people who say that have actually used one in their last trip to the supermarket. So I spoke to the issue with the 40% recycled content paper bag. That one still concerns me to some extent, but, but I was assuaged by the, the paper bag manufacturer, especially since those are all processed here, and we have enough virgin paper that's going into that. But it comes down to the pass-through cost, and our control through this nudging, having been founded on limited government as a governmental system, I feel we have no business inserting ourselves inside the finances of private retailers. It's about control more than about making a measurable difference on the amount of plastics that's actually released into the environment. All of my bags go home with me. They either go into the garbage, which go to the burner, which, plastic is petroleum, which is fuel. But we're not doing anything with where I think the majority of those bags come from, which is food products, fast food restaurants. So we're not banning plastic bags, we're just restricting some use of them, and we're doing that in a, in a slow method, and not actually, if you want to go, go big. Ban all plastic bags and water bottles, because that's what the majority of this, this guy are out in the, the Pacific is. And so then what's next? We've already heard plastic straws, and actually reading some other stuff, they're looking at charging fees if you don't bring your own cup to Starbucks. Kroger's already doing this. Why do we need to insert ourselves into a process that is already taking place? And what happens when a customer now sees that charge on their bill, to be motivated to switch their habit? The cashier at the store doesn't get beaten up, the city of Salem does, because they'll say, no, the city of Salem mandated us to charge you that. So they're not taking a hit, and as Mr. Ross said, they're not in the business of, how did he phrase it, alienating the customer. No, they're going to let us do that by putting a five cent fee on every bag that they want to use. It's burning a ton of political capital, and I don't think we've seen the beginning of it yet, because there's a lot of organizations that would be affected by this, and they don't have a clue that it's coming. I'd urge no vote in restricting the use of plastic bags. Thanks.
Counselor McCoy?
Following up with that, I'm not going to support this, not because I don't understand the arguments. I spent a career fighting issues where the government stopped, trying to stop government from telling business how to run their business. Did it for 35 years, so this is sort of a, another one of those issues. I'm with, I agree with Counselor Nanki, if you're going to do this, do it the right way. Don't pick one small item and a huge problem. Say, look what we've done, move on, which, because I've called folks I know around the country in states where this has occurred from my career, and they said that's basically what happened in their state. Okay, we declared victory, we've done something on plastics, and they moved on. And the topic died. There's a danger in what you're doing here to do that here. And finally, I'm voting on this, I reminded Counselor Hoy's vote on the alcohol in the park. I, in my four years, have heard more people, more people have approached me, contacted me, saying, don't, I don't agree with this, vote no on this. To your point, Counselor Nanki, we're burning political capital on a very small part of a very big problem, with a big part of the community that won't agree with this vote when it does pass, which I'm sure it will. And so for those folks, I'm going to do a no vote, because frankly, in my four years, more people have asked me to vote no on this than any other issue I've dealt with on the council.
Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I'm going to vote no on the motion, not because I don't appreciate the environmental issues. I do, but I, I'm never been a fan of banning things, or what I say punishing people who are doing the right thing. I take a little personal objection that I recognize that these bags end up in the garbage. And fortunately, in Marion County, there, it's burnt, so it doesn't last 1,000 years, it gets burnt. In Polk County, where I live, it goes to a landfill, and it's going to sit there for a long, long time. So maybe we should be moving towards this burning more of our trash. The other thing, and it was alluded to early on in the testimony, there was a, I guess a cleanup ship, I'll ship, I'll put it that way, that left San Francisco Bay on Saturday. It's moving towards that, what I call the gludge sitting between Hawaii and California, that is the size of Texas. I don't know, I haven't read other, although I heard tonight, it's as deep as the Empire State Building. But that's the ingenuity of America. $35 million has been donated, donated by, by private folks to do something about this issue. They're not taking the approach that we need to ban, that we need to clean it up, and then we need to recognize what we can do. I personally would like us to spend more time finding out where these things come from, because I've never gone out in the ocean and thrown a bag into the water. And so I, I think I agree with some of the counselors that have spoken before, but I just can't vote in favor of this.
Counselor Kazer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support some type of ban on plastic bags, but I'm not convinced that we're here with this ordinance right now. I'm a, I'm a little disappointed that this seems to be just copied from McMinville. And when I asked some questions of staff, and others did too, I mean, the, a response was, this is right from McMinville. I kind of, I actually have to say I agree with Counselor Nanki and McCoy, that why aren't we looking at other retailers and their plastic bags? And why are we just saying that these are just carryout for grocers, and, but not for food and, and things that could potentially be messy, or, or liquid, or that sort of thing? So I guess I want to say I'm not, I'm not against this, but I'm a little disappointed that we just basically copied it from McMinville. And is this really what we want for Salem? Because I would rather everybody is included in this, and we don't say, well, you're serving hot food, so you're exempt, but you're serving packaged food, so you're not. And that, I'm worried about the confusion that can cause. So if I go into a supermarket and I buy a bag of potato chips, I can't get a plastic bag, but if I buy a, a container of sushi, then I do. And that's odd. That's really odd. So I don't know if we want to try to work something out here. I would be open to pushing this deliberation off, so that maybe we can come back with an amendment of some sort, and explore that idea.
One, one thought, Counselor, I think you're making some interesting points. We could, there's a couple of ways to go. It could be referred back to staff for more work, dealing with some of the issues that have been heard, but, but with the understanding it's coming back at a time certain, because if I hear you correctly, you're saying, look, I want to vote on this, I just want the right thing.
I do, I want to vote on it, yeah. I don't want to just push it off indefinitely. I'm just not sure that we've got it right yet. And, and I know I want to start someplace, and I've, I've talked with other, you know, talked with Counselor Anderson about that. We want to start someplace, but I want to start on the right place, too.
Yeah.
And not have to say, well, 10 years down the road, we'll go do something.
Yeah.
But I want to focus on plastic bags, too, specifically, and not all of the other things that I think Counselor Cook is, is wanting more to explore as this larger thing. I want to start with plastic bags, but I think we're starting really, really small, and we could start a little bit bigger and be a bit more clear to retailers. You really do could go into a convenience store and buy packaged food, and the clerk could say, no, I can't give you a plastic bag. Or you can go in and buy a burrito that you heat up in the microwave, and they'd say, hey, you get a plastic bag, because that's prepared. And that can be very confusing to a Realtor, or a, not Realtor, a retailer. Could be confused to the Realtor that goes into the store.
Counselor Anderson, what do you think about this approach here? Or do you want an upper...
Well, I don't disagree that we need to look at this at a larger perspective, but, you know, we can put it off, we can put it off, we can put it off. This is something, a small step that we can take right now, and I suspect there might be a motion coming after this that might direct the staff to come back with the broader things we're talking about.
Yeah.
So, but, you know, we can delay and delay and delay, but we might, I think we should do it now.
What I think I hear the counselor saying, though, is that internally, within the plastic bag ban itself, there are some concerns that she has, and, and I hear exactly kind of what she's describing, that there are different kinds of effects for different kinds of retailers that are not immediately understandable, as to why me, why not them, how, would, would it make sense to you, I, I agree with you, to put this off in some sort of undetermined time, but I wonder if we put it off for a few weeks, that allow staff to revisit it, allow counselors to talk with staff, see if there are amendments, allow counselors to talk with you. What I would hate to see happen is what happened with Counselor Tesler's approach, which is, I don't have the votes, it's gone for six years. I would hate to see that happen. I'm, I'm talking about a few weeks that allow for the opportunity for, I think legitimate questions to be answered around, and I think Counselor Kazer's hitting at some really kind of internal points that might create confusion. Would that, would that make sense to you?
No.
Okay. Do you have a motion, Counselor Kazer? We'll see if he has the votes.
Well, I would, I would add, I guess, too, I, I am concerned about that there hasn't been any outreach either to retailers. This is a pretty big change for, for them, and we do have retailers that I, I think would be supportive of something like this, that they might not know it affects them. They read the paper, they, people talk with them, I, but I'm surprised by an ordinance with this big of an impact that we haven't had that outreach. And we usually do.
Yeah.
And I don't know, and that's through nobody's fault, I just think it's, it's something really important, too. So, so I totally support this, but I'm asking, I guess, for a few more weeks, or even a couple of weeks, to really think about it and do some concerted outreach. And I don't have a motion drafted, but I guess what I'm asking is maybe for a, a stay of the deliber, deliberation, or...
Why don't we, why, let me try this on, you see if you want to try to make this motion, that we defer the action on the motion till October 10th, and refer it to staff for further outreach.
Mr. Mayor, if, if I could add, I will be out of the country on October 10th, so I would prefer...
I didn't pick that for that.
I know that, I know that. Yeah, you, no. Yeah, yeah. Oh, listen, I did less comments than everybody else, yeah. So, so, you know, I don't know what the motion is going to be.
So it has more votes now, or...
Yeah, 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 yeah. But, you know, I'm still going to vote against it, but I would like it to be October 24th, the next meeting, rather, yeah, rather than the 10th. Whatever, whatever the date it is.
22nd. Counselor, will you make that motion, then?
I'll see if I can remember it. So I move to continue deliberations until our meeting of October 23rd.
And refer it to staff for further...
And refer it to staff.
22nd.
Sorry, Monday, October 22nd, and refer, refer the ordinance back to staff.
For further outreach and, and review by counselors with staff.
For further outreach and review by counselors with staff, yes. That's good.
Who wants to second that motion?
I'll second, but I, I'd like a friendly amendment. Counselor Kazer, sorry, or would that be an additional motion?
Why don't we, why don't we... Why don't we, why don't we, listen, let's hear what you think.
Okay, we'll just do that one.
Why don't you, why don't you talk a little about what you think?
Just a second, well, appreciating that we want to start somewhere with plastic bags, but really wanting to look at the scope of a community-wide approach, looking at it. So it doesn't have to be big, but looking at, you know, there are several large cities that have zero-waste policies that have, Counselor Anderson talked about the reduce, reuse, recycle, reducing the amount of plastics, reducing the impact and changing the environment as a whole, not just focusing on the one branch of behavior change, but behavior change throughout a policy lens. It would just be interesting, and as I've asked staff to maybe include some of this in the staff report, they keep saying, well, it needs to come from council, that direction needs to come from council. So I would really like in this amendment, if we can at least get a lens of what a zero-waste policy looks like for a city.
Let me try this out on you, okay?
Thank you.
Let me just work with you here on this for a second. To be ready by the 23rd with this motion and ready to go and get this up or down on plastic bags, I think if we compound it immediately, we may create a more complex issue than we want to create. I really heard Counselor Anderson make virtually a commitment that his next motion after this passes will be that more global review. I really did, I think that's what he was saying. I really think we ought to rely on the fact you'll have had a vacation, he's back, he's ready to make that second.
I just want to add to Counselor Cook, I do think they're kind of, they're together, but it's kind of separate at this time. I want to start with single-use plastic bags, but I don't want to combine a larger initiative in with that, so I want to start with this.
Just this amendment.
And then I think after we get through that, then we can start on what you're talking about.
We'll get there, we'll get there. Counselor Lewis.
Actually, I just have a question and I agree with the way this is going. Especially too, I'm concerned about merchant stores that are gonna be hit by this ban and not know about it until then. But my question is, if we're going to be doing outreach and connecting with people who are gonna be affected by this, shouldn't they have a right to come to us and say something if they want to?
There'll be a public comment period that night. I'm sure people will have an opportunity if they see something going on that really troubles them to comment again. We're not done with this issue, remember chickens, this can go on for.
Remember chickens.
Lisa remembers chickens. Okay? Are you all ready to vote on this then? Everybody ready to go? All those in favor of Counselor Kaser's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
How many we got? Four. Motion passes. Okay? Thank you very much, folks, that was.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're not on track. We only have seven more items.
Okay, we'll go on to information reports. I don't have to do that.
So you.
We have many more items.
Counselor, we're taking the paper.
No, we're not, hey, don't leave, we're gonna move right on here. We're into information reports, we're gonna go right through them here, don't want you to miss anything.
We're in information reports?
No, there is no special order. You moved it, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yo.
If I may?
Yes.
I would like to call up the ordinance, or whatever it is, 18-419, otherwise known as 6E, otherwise known as the conditional use permit on 725 High Street Southeast.
6E.
6E, okay.
Excellent, okay. He's not really, what he's gonna talk about.
I don't know.
No, but he's not a motion.
Did I do that right, Mr. City Attorney?
Oh, I see what you want to do.
We just want to call up 18-419.
Oh, I get it. Now, I'm sorry, calling it up, I see what you're saying. Who's seconding this?
I did.
Nanki, go ahead, you're right.
Well, okay, but as I understand from the city attorney, what will happen is this will come back before the council another time as the.
Right, so it's a council item, so council has to, you have to make the motion, the council has to vote on that motion.
Okay, so I made the motion, it was seconded by Nanki, I think this is something we ought to discuss in a broader, this is one of the first issues about ADUs, not ADUs, no, excuse me, not ADUs, Airbnbs, we call it something else, that's come before the council in this sort of situation, short-term rentals.
Great, it'd be interesting. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oops, aye?
Yeah, no.
Oh, wait a minute, all those opposed? Okay, Louis says a no, the motion passes. Okay.
In addition to that, Mr. Mayor?
Again?
On 6D, I would move that council hold a public hearing on the appeal of 18-418.
Okay, second by Hoy.
That's an interesting one regarding access to adjacent properties and connectivity that depending on the current configurations in dwellings versus who in multiple developments has to go first and who loses developable land and who doesn't.
Okay.
So hopefully, we can kind of get into a few of those as we look at the entirety of the criteria that are in our codes.
Great. Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Any others you'd like to bring? Okay, any questions at all here on this other information report? We'll move on then to first readings. There aren't any second readings.
Ordinance Bill number 1918, an ordinance declaring certain territory located at 3641 Boone Road Southeast annexed to the city of Salem prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District. Counselor Kaser.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Nanki.
Aye.
Counselor McCoy.
Aye.
Counselor Osik.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Cook.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Passes.
Ordinance Bill number 1818, an ordinance declaring certain territory located at 2487 Robbins Lane Southeast annexed to the city of Salem prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District. Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Nanki.
Aye.
Counselor McCoy.
Aye.
Counselor Osik.
Aye.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Cook.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Kaser.
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Motion passes, or whatever it is, passes. No public, no more public comment, we're adjourned.